Meeting's order, as is our tradition, and tonight we have a very, very special pledge of allegiance. We're going to continue to honor someone who has served our town. And even though we're done celebrating our 150th birthday, one of our special town residents is just celebrated his 100th birthday. So I'd like to call up to lead us in the pledge, World War II veteran, volunteer extraordinaire, and award-winning video producer Jim Schmidt to lead us. Everybody would please rise for the pledge.
Were you talking about me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And you know why we're all standing? I think we should be singing "Happy Birthday" to the birthday boy. So I am not-
I'm not going to join you.
Yeah, we're going to do it. And I'm not a magical, but I'll start. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Jim. Happy birthday to you. Jim, I promise that's it. So going from the very happy side of our town to a little bit of sadness. Since last we met, we have lost several longtime town officials and some of our members, including longtime town manager John Carroll, former selectman, FinCom, and finance director Tom McQuade, and just last week, former selectman Gary Lee. In addition, the following town meeting members are not with us. John Collins, who we lost just this past week, along with Joe Turner, and earlier this year, Dennis Doherty. If we could please have just a moment of silence in their memory. Thank you. Before we start any business, we're going to ask Madam Clerk to swear in any new town meeting members who haven't had the opportunity to be sworn in by the town clerk's office. So if you could please rise and, Madam Clerk, if you could lead us.
Hello? Okay, will everyone raise their right hands, please? Do you swear that you will faithfully and powerfully perform the duties incumbent on you as town meeting members to the best of your ability according to the bylaws of the town and the statutes of the commonwealth? All set? Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of quick announcements before we get underway. One, Carol McQuade from the League of Women Voters has guides for new town meeting members. If you, I don't, if Carol is here, she may be outside giving out the new town meeting member guides. Please see Carol to get your guide. And also from our friend Peter McFarland, quick announcement, that, great news, folks, Farmer's Market will be returning to the Town Common Tuesdays from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., starting June 13th through October 17th. They are still looking for Norwood businesses or organizations who would like to be vendors. And if you are interested, this is one of the easier emails to remember, norwoodmafm@gmail.com. That's norwoodmafm@gmail.com. We do have a quorum, and I want to just give folks a few reminders before we tee off. One, as we learned last year with a female moderator, you address me as Madam Moderator. I will tell you, normally I'm not happy being called a Madam, but this is the one time that you're allowed to do so, so thank you for that. When you are called, when you're recognized to speak, if you are a town meeting member, please rise, state your name. Well, first, wait for a mic runner. You can either come to the front and use the microphone there, or the runner will come to you if you stand. You would state your name and district. If you're not a town meeting member, state your name and address. And if you are a spokesperson for a group affected by an article, you must state so. The sponsor or the proponent of an article will have 10 minutes to speak, with subsequent speakers limited to five minutes. A one-time certain extension can be granted by the body, and that requires a vote. As a reminder, the meeting is being broadcast live by Norwood Community Media. Big thank you to the NCM crew for all that they do. And last but not least, because there's never time at the end when people want to run out when we dissolve town meeting, I want to recognize the huge amount of work that are being done by several different areas. A big thank you to the general manager's office, town clerk's team, the high school custodians, and the building department staff, in addition to Norwood PD that is keeping order in the hall for us. So thank you there. All right. Mr. Lane, are you ready?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
All right. Because Special Town Meeting deals with some current fiscal year articles which could affect annual town meeting articles, it is our practice to start with the special. Mr. Lane, I understand that you have a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting until the close of the special town meeting. Is that true, sir?
Still moved, Madam Moderator.
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I declare Special Town Meeting is now in order. All right. Article one. Article one is being withdrawn by the petitioner. And let me take a second to read what the petitioner wrote, just for context here, and I think it's actually good news. "After discussions with multiple members of the Board of Selectmen, Norwood Firefighters Local 1631 feel assured that there will be improved communication and attention paid to our concerns. Local 1631 would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for reaching out and look forward to the open lines of communication in the future. Sincerely, Paul Ronco, President, Local 1631." That brings us to Article two. Article two, three, and four are going to follow pretty much the same format. These are articles that are sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. They will make the motion. Because it is, all three of them involve zoning changes after the Board of Selectmen, there will be a report by the planning board. And then I'm going to call on the proponent, which in this case is Ms. Howard, to present, to give a presentation. And as a proponent, she has 10 minutes. Also to note, Articles two, three, and four will require a two-thirds vote. So I will announce the quantum of vote before each article, but just for simplicity's sake, all three are the same. All right. Mr. Lane, you have a motion on Article two.
Yes, Madam Moderator. I move to approve Article two of the special town meeting as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding. Correct?
Yes.
Mr. Lane on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Board of Selectmen voted on April 11th, 2023, to oppose Article two. Additionally, we've received a letter of opposition from the Economic Development Committee opposing the article.
Mr. Hackey, I think you have a planning board presentation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Whatever's easier for you.
At the April 24th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, the Board-
Hold on. Yeah, hold on.
Hello?
There we go. He's going to, he's going to put it up for you, Mr. Hackey.
Thank you. Works. Okay. "At the April 24th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, the Board held public hearings and voted their recommendations on special town meeting articles two, three, and four. For each article, the Board voted to oppose the article by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. In 2021, Town Meeting approved the creation of a new Boston-Providence Highway District. The BPH District is designed to promote highest and best uses of land on Route 1. It encourages commercial uses and reinvestment in an area of town best suited for it. Commercial growth is vital to the continued economic prosperity for every resident in town, providing businesses and shopping opportunities, jobs, and, very importantly, a reduced residential tax rate that keeps Norwood more affordable than most surrounding towns. The Board agrees with the Economic Development Committee's assessment that these articles would limit economic growth and have detrimental fiscal impacts on the community. The BPH increased green space requirements and requires substantial landscaping for redevelopment, including planting of native trees along streetscapes, and a requirement to preserve existing mature trees within 25 feet of a street. These requirements address the heat sink effect on Norwood's local climate. Residential zoning does not contain any such provisions, and the Board feels that these articles would run counter to the intent of the BPH's environmental goals. The BPH also provided for increased protection against residentially zoned abutters off Route 1, requiring increased setbacks, green space, dense vegetation, and eight-foot fencing. A majority of parcels in the BPH share a rear property line with residentially zoned property. No commercial zoning can completely avoid such a transition between districts. Creating single-family residential lots directly on Route 1, however, would be inconsistent with adjacent zoning along the highway and add new zoning conflicts. Significantly, it would represent a loss of protection for existing residential abutters, as residential zoning contains no such provisions for screening and fencing. The Board continues to prioritize these protections and believes these articles would worsen conditions for residential abutters. Accordingly, the Board does not recommend approval of these articles by Town Meeting. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Hackey. All right, and we're now going to go to the proponent, Ms. Howard. Do you want to come down here? Or is it easier for you? Okay. Let's make sure that you're welcome. And please identify yourself to, we all know you, Ms. Howard, but-
Good evening. My name is Judith Howard, Town Meeting Member from District Three. After working many years in Washington, DC, I returned home to Norwood to begin another interesting journey. I founded in volunteering. So the very first project in the early 2000s pertained to the issue of rezoning Route 1 with Norwood's Town Planner at the time. The vision was to have only one commercial zone, from the Westwood Line to Walpole, instead of various zones along the highway, with certain areas being exempted. Why? Route 1 had already been identified as the auto mile, which was an absolutely brilliant marketing tool. The town of Norwood should have taken advantage of that momentum in order to have an extremely large commercial base on the highway and generate considerable revenue. Land use and management of our town of Norwood is so important. However, the opportunities passed by, and rezoning never came to fruition back then. When the Boston-Providence Highway District zoning by law was developed in 2020, and I think it was a little earlier than that, the COVID pandemic had arrived. Our town and the country were in lockdown. I approached the previous Town Planner with thoughts and ideas and emails and conversations to protect the town of Norwood and its residents by exempting certain parcels of property. Public hearings were not done in person, but via Zoom, which made everything so difficult as one couldn't hear anything. And really, residents were out of the loop, so public access was reduced a great deal. The new zoning rules and regulations would allow by rate, with approval of the Planning Board, 60-foot-high buildings, 40-foot-high packing garage, and the open lot storage of unregistered vehicles. I tried to give a speech at Town Meeting, but was interrupted, and the Boston-Providence Highway District passed a town meeting without any exemptions for land that had been zoned residential or even existing green space. So what are those properties around Pendigast Circle? And why should they be excluded from the Boston-Providence Highway District? First of all, who is James Pendigast? He was the town of Norwood's first bookkeeper, accountant, and town clerk. In June 1960, the Massachusetts Legislature enacted Chapter 0488, designating the Rotary as the James E. Pendigast Circle. And there's a boulder on the Lower Manhattan Side that signifies that designation. So the areas include 1.83 acres of mature woods separating Route 1 from the dead-end residential neighborhood on the Nappontet Street Extension. Those woods should have been excluded from rezoning. Turning 1.83 acres of mature woods from a residential zone into the commercial district of the Boston-Providence Highway is absolutely wrong. Rentering the woods vulnerable to being torn down and turned into an open lot storage for unregistered vehicles is a major mistake that Articles two and three are meant to rectify. Moreover, the woods and ramps are the gateway to Norwood's center. The woods on one side of Pendigast Circle and on the other side, Manhattan Street Side, could be a high-rise, and that's what we don't want. But what you are seeing driving off the circle are those woods. There is no obvious entry to them. And as they are behind the off-ramp, and they also act as a buffer to separate the highway from residents' homes, it's extremely important to note that the Algonquin Gas Pipeline is located through these properties as well. On the Manhattan Street Side of Pendigast Circle is another green space and habitat to hawks, birds, other birds, deer, and other wildlife. And so it's just to prevent any high-rise development from being built at that location. Pendigast Circle is elevated from the highway. It is not Route 1. Manhattan Street flows into the circle from one side and Nappontet Street from the other. There should be nothing to mar the view of anyone driving around Pendigast Circle. What Town officials should have done was to take a proactive stance and exempt these areas from being included in the Boston-Providence Highway District. They are supposed to protect Norwood residents. They are the guardians and caretakers of our town and should have been watching what was happening. Listening to the needs of residents is critical, always in the pursuit of excellence, and always being mindful of the best interests of our town of Norwood. Because they didn't, it became clear to follow this year with three petitions, each signed by 12 Town Meeting Members, to be brought before the annual town meeting. However, the Board of Selectmen decided to move it to the special. Then it went on to Planning Board in the public hearing on April 24. It is extremely important to note that at every venue, there were questions and criticisms that the petitioner did not notify the owners of the various properties. One has to wonder if the criticism is an intentional mechanism used to intimidate, to interrupt the thought process, and to change the narrative. However, did the owners, applicants, or their attorneys ever notify Norwood residents ahead of time as to what plans they had or have in mind? No, because information is quite vague. Usually, owners are out-of-town developers, and when all is said and done, they go home to their bucolic towns. In this case, no one advised any residential abutters that their backyards on the Nappontet Street Extension were turning from residential to commercial. All they are trying to do now is to reverse the mistake and turn it back into what it always had been and what should have stayed, residential. Residents do not know if Town officials have requested owners, applicants, or their attorneys to compromise and see what can be done to assuage and rectify the problems that Norwood residents are requesting. The issue that is paramount here is the general welfare of the town of Norwood itself and its residents. Small towns like Norwood are worth preserving. We made a mistake feeling to exclude these important and rare remaining green spaces from the commercial district. It's easily fixed by voting in favor of these articles, and I ask for your support. And Madam Moderator, I will leave the next ones to other speakers to speak on this article.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. All right, we have a number of registered speakers on this article. The first one is Mr. Reiki, District Eight. Can we get a runner to go over to Mr. Reiki? Can you raise your hand, please, sir?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Craig Reiki, District Eight. Just to follow up, these parcels have 400 feet of the Algonquin Gas Pipeline running through them, and it's a small lot. And that's a lot of pipeline in that short area, but it runs in two different directions. It goes from east to west, and then it turns southward, and it eventually goes under the Rotary. This wasn't disclosed when Town Meeting voted on this, and it wasn't just now. It serves 7,500 homes in Norwood, so in a sense, if you use gas, you're in a butter. If this breaks, the entire town of Norwood has no gas. It's about a 2.33 acre tract of land, and the evacuation zone is nine acres. So the blasting area exceeds the property line by quite a bit. It goes into my yard and several other, 14 other houses. The distance of the zone is 725 feet in diameter. And to visualize this, the Rotary is only 500 feet, so it's bigger than the Rotary. The evacuation zone includes part of the Rotary, the northern part, the northern down ramp, all four lanes of Route 1. So it goes all the way from Nappontet Street across to Manhattan Street and can set both sides on fire. And again, 14 homes. Currently, there's a plan being appealed for an open lot storage that was disapproved. The second suggested use by law that this body allowed was a daycare center, believe it or not. They also suggested a bank, small retail, or restaurant. The pipeline was constructed in 1952 when there was less than 100 homes east of Route 1. There was less than 300 people living there. My mother-in-law grew up in that house. And this is all according to the 1950 census. Today, the area qualifies as a high consequence area by the U.S. Department of Transportation due to the high population around the pipeline. I don't think there's anything that can be done on that small parcel that could justify risking these people's lives. As soon as it gets zoned commercial, it encouraged development right on the easement of the pipeline. In fact, directly above it, they wanted to stack over 75 cars directly over the pipeline with additional fuel. Separation between people and pipelines is rule number one, the pipeline's safety. It was true in 1952 when they purposely put it on this side of Route 1, and it's true today. Residential zoning disallowed any building. It left that tract of land. You drive down the ramp, just look to your, to your right. That's the piece we're talking about. It doesn't need any additional things to help it with the heat sink or anything. It's a natural piece of property. It's a nice buffer. If there was an accident during construction, obviously, the construction workers and then first responders would be at risk. After construction, if there was an organic failure, and again, it's a 71-year-old pipeline, it'd be the business employees, customers, commuters going down the ramp in the 14 households. Norwood doesn't have a hospital right now. And just finally, blast zones and daycares do not go together. Thank you.
All right, our next registered speaker is Eve Hogan from District Eight. Eve, if you want to come up here?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll save the runner a trip.
Hello, everybody. I'm Eve Hogan, District Eight, Town Meeting Member. I also speak for the Nappontet Street Neighborhood Association, which is 36 homeowners that live on Nappontet Street directly affected by this article. I'm voting in favor of Article two because I believe that not excluding the woods in this rezoning- this rezoning was a mistake. I believe that Town Meeting was not fully informed at the time of the vote on the rezoning, did not have all the important facts, and would not have voted to zone mature woods commercial if you knew that they were swept up in the BPH District. I feel so strongly about preserving these woods and Norwood's green spaces that that's why I became a Town Meeting Member this year. Here's what Town Meeting Members were told when they voted for the rezoning: that creating the BPH District would improve the town and protect the environment; that it would ensure that open vehicle storage lots would be placed in areas away from residential zones and would be buffered and properly screened from abutting properties; it would make Norwood more walkable and pedestrian-friendly; minimize the negative visual and environmental impact of open vehicle storage by restricting it to less land area; address the impacts of climate change by expanding Norwood's tree canopy and creating more green space; ensure that new vehicle storage lot uses would be compatible with existing surrounding uses; increase landscape buffering requirements where commercial land borders residential districts; and lessen the urban look and feel of Norwood by creating less paving and more green space and reducing the impacts of climate change. Of course, with that description, I would have voted for it, too. What was not said, ever, was that among the parcels being rezoned was 1.83 acres of mature residential woods. Those woods were always zoned residential. They are directly abutting a quiet, dead-end residential neighborhood where I and all my neighbors live. It is not open to commercial businesses. No one can drive through. Those woods are a habitat for red-tailed hawks, deer, rabbits, groundhogs, cardinals, blue jays, all sorts of wildlife. They're a beautiful view entering and leaving Norwood, and they are one of the last remaining green spaces along Route One. Including the woods in the rezoning renders them susceptible to being torn down, paved over, and made into a cement parking lot, as we already saw when a developer asked the Planning Board for a special permit to do just that. While that permit was denied, now that the woods are commercially zoned, they're vulnerable to more similar plans. Making the woods commercial causes the exact opposite of everything that the BPH District proposal promised you when you voted for it. Zoning the residential woods leaves 1.83 acres of Norwood's existing green spaces open to destruction for commercial purposes; allows open vehicle storage directly abutting a residential zone; allows for developers to lay paved, impervious surfaces where there is now wooded land; expands rather than reduces the area in which open vehicle storage will exist; creates the potential for additional congestion on Route One with additional commercial activity and traffic with minimal landscaping and no sidewalks; and creates potential pedestrian and driving safety hazards. Because the results are so opposite to the stated intent, I have to believe that had Town Meeting Members known that these woods were being included, someone would have proposed excluding them, just as Ms. Howard has done here. To be clear, I understand how much work went into the rezoning, and I am not at all against the BPH District. Voting to exclude the woods from the BPH District will not undo any of the hard work that was accomplished and will not trigger indefinite back-and-forths. It's simply correcting a small oversight that should have been fixed in the first place but was not noticed. It would have been very difficult for anyone to have realized that the woods were being included. Besides never being mentioned by the town planner in his presentation about the rezoning, the woods aren't even really on the highway at all. They are tucked behind the off-ramp, behind a residential neighborhood, with no road leading to them, no entrance from the highway at all. Woods don't have a recognizable address, so even if anyone had mentioned their address numbers, you would have been hard-pressed to identify the land. That said, I don't believe that the address of the woods, rather than the Capworld property, was ever included in any notice. You now have a chance to right a very serious wrong and to return those woods to residential. Hopefully, ultimately, they can then be designated conservation land. Before I sit back down, I also just want to address criticism I have heard from some who believe that the current landowner should have been notified personally instead of having to read it in the paper like the residents did. I want to clarify very strongly that nothing is being done to change the nature of the land that this landowner purchased. It was purchased in 2019, two years before they returned commercial. When they were purchased by the current landowner, they were residential. So, nothing, all this article is doing is putting the zoning back to how it was when he bought it. There is no damage to the landowner.
Ms. Hogan, do you need more time, or are you wrapping up?
Um, no, I can, I can close and just say thank you. I think I've made my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Brody, District Four. I'm in favor of the motion for Article Two. I've driven down the Napansett Street extension. I have seen this neighborhood. There are trees behind the homes on this street. These trees shield the homes from the highway and the cars going down the ramp, from the Pendergast Circle to the Boston-Providence Highway. These trees help absorb the noise of the traffic and help provide the privacy for the residences. And I'll admit, I voted for this, but had I known all the information, and as Eve Hogan mentioned, no, we were not, I feel, we were not properly informed. The area around Pendergast Circle should not have been included as part of the Boston-Providence Highway District. At the town meeting, we were led to believe that everyone affected by this zoning had been contacted. This turned out not to be the case. I do not believe that anyone living on the Napansett Street extension had ever been Before the zoning change, the wooded area behind the 596 Providence Highway, the Enterprise Station, had been zoned as residential. Now with the change to the Boston-Providence Highway District, this area now became commercial. This is not right. Please, let's fix the zoning for this area. This area between the 596 Providence-Boston Highway and the Pendergast Circle should be zoned back to residential. Please, let's make this right and vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Ms. Ladani, he'll bring a mic. You're okay?
Hi, my name is Gail Ladani. I live at 580 Napansett Street. I am one of the residents affected by the change of...
Ms. Ladani, I believe you're also a Town Meeting Member?
I am.
Okay, District Eight.
District Eight, thank you. I'm a newbie, so. I, like Eve, joined the Town Meeting Member because, you know, politics is not my thing. I sell real estate. I have, for 30-some-odd years, I've lived at this residence for 36 years. When we bought, I knew I was buying near the airport. I knew the airport was behind my property, but I also knew, across the street, all those homes had residential woods. As a Realtor, I checked. I was told, "That's all residential, no commercial," because I've got the airport behind me. And I thought, "Well, I'll take a chance." And I've been there for 36 years. It's a lovely neighborhood. Now, this change happened during COVID, and we were told to secure in place, not go out, don't go to the stores, don't touch your mail, don't touch food. We were, we were living like everybody, scared. And suddenly, we're told, "Oh, and by the way, your woods have been changed to, to commercial." And we, how? How did this happen? Mr. Hal Kiotis, the town planner at the time, said, "You were given notice." No, we weren't. We were not notified at all. He said, "I put a notification in the paper. I did what was required of me." How would you like that, if that happened to you and you were a direct abutter of something? No, the right thing to have been done was to notify the abudders so that we could have a chance to come to Town Meeting and say, "This is wrong. This is not right." We were never given that opportunity. The property was identified as 596. Even if we had read the paper, we wouldn't have known what property they were talking about. Capworld is at the end of the street, not our woods. Now, someone might come up here and say, "Listen, it's residential. He can do whatever he wants. He can tear all those woods down. Let him. If he's going to do that, he's not a good builder. He's not a good neighbor." However, he bought it. It was residential. He, he knew it was residential when he bought it. So why then did he have to go and ask for a special permit to put more cars, more, you know, tar, lights? It's awful. And there's no access to this piece of property, other than going through his commercial. You cannot access it from the rotary. You can't access it from Route One. There's no way to access this property. So he bought it knowing that it was residential. And then look what fell on his lap. Look what you got. Do you know how hard it is? I'm a Realtor. Do you know how hard it is to convert residential to commercial? Doesn't happen. Doesn't happen. And this fell in his lap, much to the dismay of our, of the neighborhood. Now, again, people can say, "Well, hey, he can tear all those woods down. He can do whatever he wants." Again, David Spiegel, if he did that, is not a good neighbor to Norwood. The other thing that we've been hearing as a neighborhood is, "It's your fault. You should have said something at the time. It's your fault." How could it be our fault when we had no knowledge? Look at us. Look at the passion we are having against this. Do you think if we were notified and knew it, that we wouldn't have fought this? As a Realtor, I can tell you this: that property, he gets to do what he wants to that property as a commercially-based property. Our property values go down. I pay over $10,000 a year in taxes, real estate taxes. I'll bet you I pay more than anybody. I've got the airport behind me. I've got, okay, and I've got Route One over there. But I've always had residential woods to cushion that, to buffer that.
Ms. Ladani?
I'll wrap it up.
Okay, thank you.
Our property values will go down. We will go to Town, we will go and abate our taxes. We're not going to have an airport behind us and then a parking lot in front of us. And again, that parcel of land is not on the highway. There's no entrance to it, and I strongly urge you to support us. We will do the same for you someday, if this is ever done to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next registered speaker is Ms. Esco. We're, we're not making you work too hard yet.
Thank you. Toni Esco, District Five. I first became aware of the Boston-Providence Highway District zoning glitch last year when some residents of the Napansett Street extension expressed their shock and outrage when an existing nearby parcel formerly full of green vegetation started to disappear from their view right next to their homes. My husband and I drove to the neighborhood to see the area, and we were, and we happened to be able to talk with residents who were outside in their driveways at the time. The overarching comments were, "How could this happen? My property has been compromised. The value diminished just so a developer can make even more money." I really empathize with them because my husband and I often have had to deal with undesirable impacts on our street on occasion as well, because we have business and manufacturing zones nearby on our street. We pretty much have had to be well-informed, full-time active residents while living on Indicar Street. Rest assured that the petitioner, Ms. Howard, has done her homework. She has spent numerous hours studying the zoning map and isolating individual properties whose proximity to the Boston-Providence Highway District Zone possessed the greatest risk for negative impact. She saw the changes needed to be made and tried to get those in charge to make the zoning adjustments, but was met with surprising resistance, insufficient help, and no solutions. As a responsible citizen and longtime informed Town Meeting Member, she decided, "I must do it myself." I told her she's kind of like the little red hen. Ms. Howard's articles are a rational, intelligent solution to the zoning flaws created in and around the Boston-Providence Highway District Zone within the Pendergast Circle area. These articles could have and should have been brought forth by the Planning Board, but they didn't do it. You need to ask why. To bring these rezoning articles forward, Ms. Howard had to post a public hearing and advertise in the newspaper twice at a personal expense of about $750. She did this because she cares so very deeply about the buildings and their appearances in town and because she cares about the homes and the townspeople living in them. I don't expect perfection from any town board. That's not possible, nor is it reasonable. But as a Norwood resident and a Town Meeting Member, I do expect honesty and integrity in my local government. I do expect that wrongs should be righted, and I do expect the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen to care about its residents' concerns. Economic development is very important for the growth and prosperity of the town. I get it. With good responsive zoning, the business and residential communities can both live harmoniously and prosper together. Isn't that a good plan? That's what these rezoning articles propose to do. Why aren't we smart enough and resourceful enough to craft optimum zoning? If these articles do not pass, then my question is to the Planning Board: how do the future negative impacts of affected residents' properties get addressed? What about the gas pipeline? Are you seriously going to let somebody build over that? And the other comment I have has to do with the regulations that require green buffers in these zones by developers, and that's essential. However, I remember asking the question: if the developers do not put in the required thick green vegetation buffer, is there a fine for that? No, there's no teeth in those regulations, and I guess that's not allowed by law. I don't know why. But unless those kind of issues are addressed, I foresee more problems. So I do look forward to the future dialogue on these questions for Articles Two, Three, and Four, but at this point, I would merely support the effort of Ms. Howard, and I thank her for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esco. Donald Hale, this is a citizen. Mr. Hale, in the back. Thank you, sir.
Is this functional? Yes, it is.
It is.
I don't have a great deal to add to this.
Mr. Hale, can you identify yourself with your name and your address?
My name is Donald Hale, 583 Napansett Street. I am technically an abutter to the property, but only by a small amount, but I'm an abutter. And I found out about this one day. I looked out in the backyard, past the tree line, and found a bunch of red and orange flags fluttering in the breeze. So this was my notification about this. Since then, of course, we've been to multiple Planning Board meetings and so on, and neighborhood meetings and what have you. I have a couple of ways to look at this. One is, it is a travesty, frankly, that it has happened this way. And what needs to be done is to unravel it, go back, and it's going to turn out to be, in fact, what we have been calling for years, an inconvenient truth. This is not something that anybody wants to address, I'm sure, if they don't have to, but I really feel you have to. I might also point out, as why should this sort of thing happen? The Selectmen had a very interesting presentation by Mr. Hopcroft, telling you why it's not a very good idea to take and put a parking lot somewhere where you now have a proper wooded area, whether it's woods or grass or whatever, it's not asphalt. And the only other thing I would say is, everybody... And the only other thing I would say is, everybody would love to have the town return to that quaint village of yesteryear. It cannot, it will never go back to that. But you have in front of you the ability to look forward and make the town what it can be and should be from here forward. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Ms. Donahue, I have you as the next registered speaker.
Helen Donahue, District 6. Madam Moderator, may I please stay seated? It's difficult for me to stand. Thank you.
You're good.
Next, before I begin my remarks, I have a question, please. Someplace along in the notes about this controversy, I read that, does the town own any of the land that's in question on the Napolson Street side?
All right. Mr., who's going to take that? Mr. Plaska or Mr. Mizuko?
I think she's referring to the next article, Madam Moderator.
Yeah, I believe so as well.
Right, on the Napolson Street side?
Yes, so that would be the next article, Ms. Donahue.
So, okay, so I think that it pertains though to the whole argument about this question, so I'd like to begin my remarks then. Listening to the various comments in regard to the pipeline, there are gas pipelines all over the Town of Norwood, in the streets and on properties, and all of the guidelines for the construction that do with gas lines are very carefully monitored. Everybody's heard of DigSafe? If you want to put an addition on your porch or put up a railing, you have to call DigSafe. But the Town of Norwood Building Department and the public safety guidelines dictate all in regard to pipelines. In regard to present and former uses, the former uses of some of the property that's up for question in regard to the whole question before us have been, former uses have been so far. And in regard to the Cross Point side, on the Uptown side of the proposal, a question came up, a hotel wanted to go in on some of that property. While I was on the Board, the Board of Selectmen voted not to give them a license to put the hotel on that side. So even without the trunk highway b zoning, the Town of Norwood has departments. First of all, we have our departments, first we have our zoning bylaw, and we have the enforcement of the zoning bylaw. It came up tonight, a question about what happens if they don't put the requirements of the trunk highway, don't install the requirements that the trunk highway b requires. We have a building department, a report, that's all a person has to do is give their name to the building department, the building department will then do an investigation. If there's a violation, the procedure is that the building department sends a letter. If the letter to repair is not complied with, within a certain time period, the building department takes the case to the court. And the court always, that I've 30, you know, my whole life, the court has enforced the zoning bylaw and imposed fines, a daily fine upon any person that doesn't comply with the zoning requirement. Another comment has been made about, we have to protect the future. In a way, that's true. Route 1 goes from Maine to Florida, all of us know that. All of us have driven on some part of Route 1 in another part of the country. I've seen from Maine to Florida, down to Key West, you see some beautiful things and you see some awful things. And what are zoning, that the Norwood Planning Board spent seven meetings talking to the public about, and three public forums to try and get this concept of this wonderful zone that goes from Marlborough to Westwood, something that we've always wanted. And I think that, that I know that in the course of the, before we came to town meeting on that zoning, people who live in the residential zone on Dean Street came to the planning board, and before we came to town meeting, they told the planning board, we want to keep our zone residential. The planning board made the change before coming to town meeting. That happened last year, whenever the zoning change came in. And COVID mixed up everything, and it was hard, but the job still got done. For me, the hardest part of opposing de-zoning changes is the fact that Judith Howard is like a cousin to me, we've been together all our lives, same church and friendship. And to have to oppose my friend, but my job here, my job as a town meeting representative is to take care of the town of Norwood. And I sincerely believe that if you look at the whole scope of this proposed article, that I think that it should be opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Hall.
I am speaking against the articles, not because of what they say, but because of what they do to our process of orderly managing of these matters. I've been here in Norwood for a long time, and I've noticed that when it comes to matters of property use, there are always conflicting interests, bads chasing bads, goods chasing goods and the like. And it is a rare, if not nonexistent, thing for everybody to be satisfied that their interests have been fully addressed in the course of the working out. But we have institutions to try to do things. The zoning bylaw operates at the highest level, and as Mrs. Donahue just ably described, we have all these departments implementing the bylaw, addressing individual projects and their requirements. This seems like using a howitzer to address a bug, to me. It is just too much to be done, and mostly, I think it violates the notion of, when do you revisit a precedent? Recent issues at the federal level have brought up the principle that you go back and treat the law as settled unless the facts have changed or the law has changed. I haven't heard anybody say that the facts have changed or the law has changed on any of these matters here. Instead, what we have is a set of people who have what to them seem very legitimate disagreements with the balancing that was done or not done by the responsible institutions and ultimately by the town meeting. To me, that doesn't meet the high standard for revisiting a bylaw decision, and that's why I will be voting against the articles.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. That exhausts our registered speakers, so I'm going to open it up now. I am going to ask for one thing. Sue, if we have the actual zoning map for this article, I think it's important that everybody knows what, there are three separate articles and what we're voting on here, so... That's the one? All right. All right, opening it up. Yes, this is you.
Catherine Khalil, District 1. Thank you, Madam Moderator. When I was first thinking about this, I thought, how do I feel about going back over in kind of the way that Mr. Hall was just talking about? And then I listened to the people who are abutters, and I understood that the information wasn't presented in the way that they really understood when this was happening. So for me, so far, the evidence is very strong to support these articles. I have a question, however. For our town officials who are opposing these, and I was a little confused, I heard the planning board opposed, and the Selectmen also opposed?
That's correct.
Okay, I would appreciate-
And the Economic Development Committee is also opposed.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would appreciate if we, as town meeting members, could hear the information and the evidence that lends themselves to these town officials, that they don't think that the keeping the zoning the way that it is, is in Norwood's best interest and in the abutters' best interest. So I would like to, if we can put the lens of best interest of the town on this, I would like to hear from our town officials, please.
All right. Who would like to take that? Mr. Lane?
Madam Moderator. So we deliberated on this, and I think, and I'm speaking for myself as chairman of the board, but like Mr. Hall mentioned, I think the precedent that it set, that we as a body voted on these changes less than two years ago, and we're so soon revisiting them, you know, that for me was the driver in saying that I didn't agree to revert to, or to oppose. I too sympathize with the abutters, and I think when we're looking at this as a whole, I do feel like it's an improvement, and that's why I voted for it two years ago. Other board members may have a different opinion, but I think that the planning board and the Board of Selectmen, you know, these were things that we didn't consider lightly. And that's personally, that's my stance.
Mr. Hocky, representing the planning board.
Back here. Anybody here? So all properties on the Route 1 right of way were included in this district. That was the intention. For the planning board's part, a great deal of preparation and work on the ground and outreach to property owners was utilized. Town meeting received presentations, or conducted presentations with regard to the proposed district on two town meetings, and it was discussed at seven planning board meetings and various hearings, three information sessions, both in person and online. I know there's a great deal of concern and there's some belief that there was insufficient notice, but there was an incredible amount of outreach to the community with regard to this. The goal here was to unify the zoning along the entirety of Route 1, and that, the property with regard to, the property in question, these three articles, all are technically on Route 1. They're on the, the ramps are part of the highway. The affected parcels here, if they were to revert to residential zoning with Route 1 frontage, would no longer be consistent with the adjacent zoning. It would be a radically inconsistent use of the property and could contribute to an increased conflict between commercial and residential abutters. At least with the unified zoning, all the bylaws, screening, and setback measures that were incorporated or applied uniformly along the entirety. We took a great deal of time and effort to solidify screening, landscaping, planting efforts, and all to improve the visual, both for those who are traveling Route 1 and as best as we could possibly do for those who were potentially abutters to the back of the district. So as such, and to echo the Board of Selectmen and some of the speakers, this is a multi-year effort that culminated in a significant zoning change for this town, and to unravel part of it, sort of under these circumstances, the planning board just doesn't believe is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hocky. Dushal?
Thank you. Just as a comment, I appreciate that the-
We can't hear you.
I didn't touch something, so I figured I couldn't have done it. And I, well, it could have been me. I appreciate the fact that this took a long time to put into place. However, no changes that I think of have been made with that area so that it doesn't harm anyone to not just change it, but just keep it the way that it was. And I have to say that I'm not hearing any kind of evidence from the Selectmen or the planning board that says, you know, we really look at this wooded area and we understand what it means to the abutters, and it's really Route 1, which it does, I drive it all the time, it doesn't look like Route 1 to me. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Yes. Mrs. Taylor. He's coming, he's coming. He's running.
Jean Taylor, District 8. I have a question for the planning board chairman. I think he just said that they couldn't be unraveled, or it would be difficult to disravel. Thank you.
Come on up, Mr. Hocky.
I'm not sure exactly, I'll rephrase if I, I forget exactly what I said. It's not that it can't be unraveled, or it might be difficult, I believe it would be inappropriate at this juncture to unravel so soon after the BPH district was put into effect, this small parcel. It just, in the board's opinion, there was a process, and to dismantle that one small part of it so quickly, so soon after it was put into effect, we just don't support that proposal.
I have a comment. I think, I would like to correct a wrong that I made because I voted for it, and boy do I hate to say this, I know everybody on each board, I respect everybody on each board, I know how hard you work. I feel I didn't have, oh, shame on me, didn't look up enough of the information. And I really want to commend Dale and Eve. I'm a District 8 town meeting member, I'm sorry, I did not see it all. And I think too, maybe right or wrong, I think you need to be commended for your presentation. Thank you.
Sarah Quinn, District 2. I like to think that I voted against this the first time, but what I remember most about the conversations we've had about zoning recently, and what disappoints me so much again, is we talked a lot about required communication versus what we expect for our neighbors. And I know we had a long discussion at a previous town meeting about sending letters out to all abutters, and we all acknowledged that, yeah, we can put something in the paper, but honestly, who reads the paper these days? Like, everything's online. And we expect that our neighbors be notified when a zoning change is going to impact their property because they're our neighbors and we're all in this together. And I think we do have the opportunity tonight to fix something that we decided that really isn't in the best interest of our neighbors. That's all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bob Donnelly, District 5. Just to reiterate more on the Selectmen's viewpoint from a personal perspective, sort of reiterating what's already been said, the zoning was approved in 2020 to be part of the commercial base of the Boston Highway District. From an ownership perspective, I think when an owner of a commercial property relies on the zone as described by the town, and in this instance, to take that away from the owner after he has purchased the land and has plans for development and so forth, seems to be pulling the rug under his feet from a certain perspective. We do know that more recently, the permit, the owner's permit has been denied, and that is in litigation, and I was just wondering if we could ask town council to give us an overview of some of the legal ramifications that might be involved with this article in general.
Town Council, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator and members of the meeting. This property has been rezoned, and it was rezoned consistent with our zoning from just two years ago. There was a request made before the planning board, the planning board considered the merits of a permit- made before the planning board. The planning board considered the merits of a permit. The permit was denied. That case is now in litigation. The law on the status of property is that it's not, it's unentitled to the benefits of the, of the permit until the permit is granted, and in this case ratified by the court. If, in fact, the zoning changes, I can expect furious pushback from the applicant here complaining that he has some pre-existing right to that permit, should the court agree with the applicant and the merits of his case. However, I would take the position for the benefit of the town, that in fact, there are no rights that would be granted by the permit until the court actually ratifies the permit.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca. I'm trying to alternate between the front tables and, and the body. Yes, sir, all the way in the back there? Back row?
Brian Palmetier, District 8. I made the mistake of taking three years off from town meeting, so I missed this whole thing. I live over, on Ridge Road in Norwood, so I'm not a direct abutter here. I am a member of the Norwood Trails Committee, so I always hate when I see trees coming down, or the risk of trees coming down. I don't understand how this mistake was made in the first place. And one of the things that bothers me is somebody saying, "Oh, it's too soon to revisit this, so soon after it voted." When I look at something, when I make a mistake, when I feel I've made a mistake, I want to own up to it right away and do whatever I can.
Mr. Palmetier?
Yes.
I don't think anybody is saying there's a mistake. They're looking to change the zoning, so, just to clarify.
All right. I guess, okay. I accept that feedback. What I'm trying to say is, there are, there are members putting this proposal forward. They're saying there was an oversight. There was a mistake, or there was some, people weren't, if they had known, they would have voted differently. And so from my perspective, the longer it's, if we want it to really be protected, if we don't want the risk of pipeline incursions, if we don't want the risk of, of losing more green space, I noticed when the weather was reported recently, you know, Norwood was like 80 degrees or something when surrounding towns were less. We already have lots and lots of heat sinks in our town, lots, lots of places where we have paved areas. So, but, but I guess what I'm saying is, if there is a way to, all right, I won't use the word correct, if there is a way to adjust this, so that sites that maybe weren't really clearly considered, that just ended up being swept up in this whole thing, this whole idea of creating this wonderful zone up and down Route 1, I don't like the way, the idea of waiting. I also understand, I lost touch during the pandemic, so I can understand where those people are coming from. And you've got to go pick up the paper. You can't even subscribe to the paper, to the local Norwood record. You have to, you have to go out, and during the pandemic, who's going to go out and pick it up from the grocery store? I also wanted to point out one other thing. When you mentioned that, oh, there's, there's this wonderful requirement in here about how they're going to put landscaping between the abutters and everything, I was concerned when I heard there is no way in statute that you can require that. And I remember when the Cadillac dealership tore down that woods between us and them, between the North Plain neighborhood and us, that they weren't supposed to do that. Apparently by previous agreement, they didn't have the right, but the owner just did it, and it, and by then it was too late. And I see the, the big space behind Bach, where there was some homes built up that you can now see from their parking lot in the back, which you couldn't before. So, I'm not really confident that even if there were rules about, okay, you're going to put up a three-story building between my house and, and Route 1, that there are going to be people that are, that, you know, there are going to be for-profit businesses that are going to take into consideration being good neighbors, when many people that have done developments in our town, they develop it, "Oh, it's too high."
Mr. Palmetier, do you need more time, or are you all set?
I'm, I'm almost ready to wrap up within 30 seconds.
Please do.
So, the idea is that I don't want it to have to be litigated, to, to have to worry about the zoning board saying, "Oh, well, we're not going to approve this because it's not a good use for the area." If, if there's another way to salvage this or to protect these areas, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Bodenhoffer, do you?
Thank you, Maya Bodenhoffer, District 9. Through you, Madam Moderator. I just had two questions. One is, we've been talking about the property owner. Are all of these properties in, considered in Article 1 owned by a single property owner? Okay. And then the second question I had was about the protections around the pipeline, and I was wondering if someone from the building department could speak about what protections are in place, regardless, like, how the zoning might impact protections or not.
All right. I think we want to call on Mr. Ryan for that. Always happens when the person on the inside is the one coming up to the mic.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So as far as the pipeline, the Algonquin line, my experience being with the town in Norwood since 1999, any construction, the Algonquin Pipeline Company, Enbridge is the operator right now, has very specific conditions when working there in Algonquin gas main. They go through a really detailed review and analysis of the work to be performed, and Algonquin, Algonquin does that, and a representative from Algonquin is on-site when any work is done. They're very particular about this. They know how important that pipeline is as far as serving the communities and as far as safety and integrity. So I reached out to Algonquin today to try to get some input from them on this, and they have pipes throughout the Commonwealth. Algonquin does these gas mains, these transmission lines, and they go through various properties, including schools. They do a very detailed review and an analysis, as I mentioned, and they have very specific standards on when any excavation or any work above the pipeline is done. The project that is in discussion now at the parking lot, the representative said that this would be treated as if it was a highway, so it's very particular on what work would be allowed and how the work would be done. The representative said safety is a high priority, obviously, with this pipeline, and they adhere to federal regulations with preventive maintenance, including actually sending probes through the pipes to inspect the pipe, check the integrity, and check the wall thickness. And finally, Madam Moderator, the representative said Algonquin would not allow any project to be constructed that would jeopardize the safety and integrity of the pipeline.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Is Bodenhoffer there?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Langone. Nice to see you in the audience also, Ms. Langone. You want to wait for the mic, please?
Is this on?
Yeah.
Judy Langone, District 5. Could I move the question?
All right, is there a second? Second, Mr. Groh. All right. Moving the question will, does it end debate? It's a non-debatable motion, so that basically for anyone who's new to town meeting, it means that we will move right to voting on the motion after we vote on moving for the question. All those in favor of moving to the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Ayes have a simple majority. All right. That takes us to the motion, and again, this is a motion to basically approve Article 2 of the special town meeting as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase, or take any action in the matter. It requires a two-thirds vote. I am not even going to attempt to do a voice vote on this, but let's see about a show of hands. And again, I'm going to remind folks, please make sure your badge is prominent. If you are a town meeting member, only town meeting members should be voting on this, so make sure that I can see your badge. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All right. I think we're going to have to go to a standing count. So I'm going to need two tellers. Let me grab Mr. Greeley and Ms. Sobchuk. You knew it was happening. All right. If you are in favor, let's start, we'll start right where you guys are. This left section here, and we'll go all the way to the back. All in favor, please rise. All right, you good? All right, please sit down. If you are opposed on this section, left section right here, please rise. Okay. Center section, if you are in favor, and this includes the front tables. All the front tables. Mr. Hall knows the drill. You good? All right. All right, then, this section on the right side of the auditorium, all?
All.
Whoa, 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 sorry, sorry. All opposed, I'm sorry. Center section, including front tables. My apologies. All opposed? All set? All right. Please sit down. Now we'll go to the section on my left or the right side of the auditorium. If you are for, please rise. All right. And if you are opposed, please rise. Okay. Thank you. You can sit down. And we'll have the clerk and the director of finance check your math. All right. The motion carries 151 to 37. That brings us to Article Three. Mr. Lane.
Moderator, move to approve Article Three of the special town meeting as printed in the warrant, less the phrase, or take any other action in the matter.
All right. Mr. Lane, or Mr. Donnelly, something, on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Donnelly seconded. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. On the motion, the Board of Selectmen voted on April 11th, 2023, to oppose the article. Additionally, the Board of Selectmen received a letter from the Economic Development Committee opposing the article. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hashi? I'm going to get your name right eventually with the report of the planning board.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brian Hashi, Planning Board. At the April 24, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, the Board held public hearings and voted their recommendations on special town meeting articles Two, Three, and Four. For each article, the Board voted to oppose the article by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. In 2021, Town Meeting approved creation of a new Boston-Providence Highway District. The BPH District is designed to promote highest and best uses of land on Route One. It encourages commercial uses and reinvestment in an area of town best suited for it. Commercial growth is vital to the continued economic prosperity for every resident in town, providing businesses and shopping opportunities, jobs, and very importantly, a reduced residential tax rate that keeps Norwood more affordable than most surrounding towns. The Board agrees with the Economic Development Committee's assessment that these articles would limit economic growth and have detrimental fiscal impacts on the community. The BPH increased green space requirements, requires substantial landscaping for redevelopment, including planting of native trees along streetscapes, and a requirement to preserve existing mature trees within 25 feet of a street. These requirements address the heat sink effect on Norwood's local climate. Residential zoning does not contain any such provisions, and the Board feels that these articles would run counter to the intent of the BPH and its environmental goals. The BPH provided for increased protection against residentially zoned abutters off Route One, requiring increased setbacks, green space, dense vegetation, and eight-foot fencing. A majority of parcels in the BPH share a transition between districts. Creating single-family residential lots directly on Route One, however, would be inconsistent with adjacent zoning along the highway and add new zoning conflicts. Significantly, it would represent a loss of protection for existing residential abutters. As residential zoning contains no such provisions for screening and fencing, the Board continues to prioritize these protections and believes these articles would worsen conditions for residential abutters. Accordingly, the Board does not recommend approval of these articles by Town Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hashi. Ms. Howard? And again, this is another two-thirds vote. Ms. Howard as the proponent.
Judith Howard, District Three. I just want to reiterate my remarks earlier for Article Two. But on Article Three, I'd just like to draw your attention to the map. And that area which is being highlighted actually is owned by the Town of Norwood. And it's already general residence, it's single residence. So the only other piece of property that is owned by the Town of Norwood is further up, and it's 18557, but you can't tell it by that. But that's the only one we want to have changed to general residence right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I do have a couple of registered speakers. Mr. Brody, I have you on this.
Steve Brody, District Four. Yes, I'm in favor of this motion for Article Three. Again, it looks like the woods that go down from the round Pendergast Circle around the Ponce Street into the neighborhood. As I said, I've driven down the Ponce Street, and I've seen the houses there, and I've seen the trees behind the houses. And the people need the trees. They help block the traffic and the noise from the highway. Now, this area around Pendergast Circle should not have been included as part of the Boston-Providence Highway District. And I'm sorry that I voted for it, I really am. At the Town Meeting, we were led to believe that everyone affected by the zoning had been contacted. And this turned out not to be true. And before the zoning change, the wooded area had been zoned as residential. And with the change to the Boston-Providence Highway, this area now became commercial. Again, let's fix the zoning for this area. The area between the 596 Providence-Boston Highway and the Pendergast Circle should be zoned back to residential. Again, let's please make this right, and please vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brody. Ms. Donahue, have you registered for this one as well?
Helen Donahue, District Six. At the beginning of my remarks previously, I asked, what was the town-owned land? And could we please see that slide again that has the flashing picture? It was just on a moment ago. So that's, thank you, that's the town-owned land. So there is no access to that town-owned land from a street. So if the Town of Norwood, the Town of Norwood wouldn't have taken down the trees if this has changed, the Town of Norwood has no access and couldn't use the land. It's abutted by private property. So that land should have not even been included in your thoughts about the change back. Because it's just not accessible. And in addition to that, the Town of Norwood zoning bylaw has a provision which says that you can't go from a higher-use land to a less-use land. So that town-owned land couldn't be accessed through a private owner's property. So I'm just, you know, we're working on trying to get Washington Street from Westwood to Walpole straightened out. We're working on trying to get Route One from Westwood to Walpole straightened out. And when Bach, on the other side of Napa Street, built on during Toyota, bought the land from Simoneys, Bach put all of those house lots along the Ponce Street. And the use of the parking lot, it's different now. In the old days, lights would shine all bright, all over the parking lots. And now the lights are confined down to exactly where the vehicles are stored. Bach was so honorable in putting up all of the trees, all of the fences. My friend lived across the street, Nancy McDonald. Every single thing that they said that they would do, they did. And it was successful. And that's the same thing that's behind Jack Madden's, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Mr. Plasko, I saw you had your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I don't think some of the comments Mrs. Donahue just made points out that it really doesn't matter what we do with this piece of property as far as the zoning. Because of its location, the property's rezoned around it being residential, you can't access it, all that stuff is true. Additionally, we're going to do anything with that property, we'd have to come back to Town Meeting, unless it was a town use, which we still, again, would have no access. But if we were going to sell it for any other use, that's not going to happen without Town Meeting action. So we really don't need to do anything. But I did support it being in the Boston-Providence Highway just to keep the whole area the same zone. And since we've rezoned this to residential, the other article rezoned the rest of the area to match the existing residential abutting it, I think it's only proper to look on the map and see the same thing. So I think we should approve this, but it's really not going to have much significant practical effect. But I think we should vote yes.
All right. No, actually, I wasn't pointing to you, sir, I was pointing to the gentleman in the
Pat Ronan, District Seven, Madam Moderator. So it's, I don't know how we would be able to take those other properties out of the zone and then reject the next couple, that wouldn't seem fair, but, so I'm probably an article late on this, but I was wondering, like, how many other residential properties are abutting the Boston-Providence Highway? Does anyone have that information?
Ms. Bouchard, do you want to take that? I'd like to introduce our new town planner, Sarah Bouchard. No, 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 no. I know we're all really happy about it, but.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Sarah Bouchard, Town Planner, and also Town Meeting Member in District Seven. I don't have an exact count of how many residential properties were impacted by the creation of the BPH, but I will tell you that the backside of the vast majority of the BPH on either side of Route One abuts residential, residentially zoned land, all the way up and down. So there's some minor exceptions to that, but generally speaking, we've got residential neighborhoods up and down Route One.
That answer agree?
Yeah, it's eight miles, so, you know, four on either side.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, I just think that last year's Town Meeting, we were opposed, and I know it's different, to piecemeal zoning, where we're pulling something out of an existing area. And my concern is that you have a lot of other residential properties here that are not included in this discussion. There was a thorough process done to rezone the entire stretch of eight miles, including all of the residential properties along the highway. So now we're pulling a few out for one neighborhood, which they certainly have valid concerns, but if there are other residential neighborhoods that have those concerns, maybe we look at approaching the town and saying, how do we rezone it? Or how do we work together instead of this sort of piecemeal zoning where it seems like we're going bit by bit? That's all I had. Also, a couple of people mentioned the newspaper. It is online and free, so check it out.
Thank you for that. Stay close.
Sarah Sullivan, District Nine. As a follow-up to Mr. Ronan's, I believe that was your name, sorry, question, how many, when we did the rezoning for the Boston-Providence Highway, how many residential properties, residentially zoned properties were changed to commercial?
Madam Planner?
That's a fantastic question, and I don't have an answer for you. I'm sorry, I wish I had been able to prepare for that. I know that BPH was a mix of literally every zoning district that we had on our map. There were parcels, you know, scattered all up and down the highway. But I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you on exactly how many there were.
Just as a follow-up, I appreciate your honesty there. I just, that would help me in what he raised as a very valid concern is just what's sometimes termed as spot zoning, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Bartlet?
Hi, Sue Bartlet, District Three, Town Meeting Member. I don't know a lot about zoning, but in looking at the map, it looks like this property is already single residence, so I'm not sure what we're voting on because it's not part of the Boston-Providence Highway District. It's already single residence, so that's my comment.
Why don't we have, it sounds like that's a question. You're asking if it already is single family residence. Ms. Bouchard, would you?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Sue, would you mind putting up the slide that removes? Okay, yeah, thank you. So everything that you see here, that's this slate blue color, is the Boston-Providence Highway zoning district. Everything in this mint green is the single residence district. So yes, you can see that this parcel is already single-family residential.
Let me defer to Town Council on this one. If it's already zoned as single residence, seems like this motion is moot.
It is properly noted before the meeting. It is entitled to a vote. If it turns out that in fact it's moot, then the zoning will remain the same.
Okay, I buy that. Why don't we go right over there, sir?
Eric Fleming, District Nine. Along the same vein, it seems like this Lot 57, if you go back to that previous slide, which I believe is mentioned is owned by the town. I believe we've left that now as an island of commercial with residential all around it. And I'm wondering if this article was intended to address that lot, not this lot.
Is that a question?
Is that correct, that what we really were trying to do is rezone Lot 57 and not this lot that's outlined in yellow?
Ms. Howard, it's your article, so we'll, wait for a microphone, please.
Thank you, Judith Howard, District Three. Actually, that gentleman is correct, because number one in the yellow, in number 57, 18557, plus those two little sections right beside it are all owned by the Town of Norwood. And actually, what we wanted was to have 57 and those two little sections also be as the general residence, single residence. Yep. Thank you, so that's what we want.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hopcroft?
Francis Hopcroft, District One. Is the Boston-Providence Highway District an overlay district or a permanent district?
Let's have Ms. Bouchard answer that rather than people yelling from the tables. I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Madam Moderator, this is a base district, it is not an overlay. This is the underlying zoning of that parcel.
Thank you. Young lady in the back?
Hi, Rachel Weber, District Eight. You'll have to excuse my ignorance, but if we did leave this as commercial, we have still control whether we change it or not as to what is built there, correct?
Correct. Whatever goes there, there's still control over that.
So technically, if we left it as was, we would still decide if anything is ever put there.
That's correct.
Ed Ferris, District Eight. Madam Moderator, don't we need to amend this article, seeing as how it's talking about Lot One, which is not the intent?
Want to take that? No. I did not hear the question, Mr. Ferris. I did not hear the question, Mr. Ferris. Say it again.
I was saying, don't we need to amend this article because Lot One is not the intent that was meant?
Are you offering an amendment?
I can offer an amendment to change Lot One to Lot 57 with two side lots to it.
Yeah, but then I think we would have a problem with notice. So, Mr. Ferris, unfortunately, no can do.
So does that mean this is invalid?
It means that per Town Council, that this may or may not be valid.
Sorry, Madam Moderator. Sorry.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be really, I'm going to be really honest with you. If it already is residential, you're just voting to have it be residential, still be residential.
Right. So in other words, this is not the intent that they wanted, and it's not something we need to be concerned with.
Correct. Ms. Haley?
Four. Move the question, please.
All right, question's been moved. All those in favor moving the question, say aye. All those opposed, say no. That was unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, this takes a two-thirds vote, but I have a feeling that maybe we can handraise on this one. So again, this is to approve Article Three of the special town meeting as printed in the warrant, lest the phrase "or take any other action in the matter" requiring a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And again, this is if you're in favor of this motion. All right. Thank you. You can put your hands down if you are opposed to Article Three. Please raise your hand. You put your hands down, sorry. This is really a little bit of a, you know, helping with the upper arms. All right, motion carries, 102 to 26. That brings us to Article Four. Mr. Lane?
Move to amend the official zoning map as set forth in the warrant, except for the deletion of the following: Map 18, Block Six, Lots 74 through 80 inclusive; Map 18, Block Seven, Lot 46, and the words "or take any other action in the matter."
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Lane, on the motion?
On the motion, the Board of Selectmen voted on April 11th, 2023 to oppose the article. Additionally, the Board of Selectmen received a letter from the Economic Development Committee opposing the article.
Thank you. Mr. Lane, Mr. Hushy? Who had reported the planning board?
All right. As has been stated on some prior articles, the Board, the Planning Board voted on April 24th, I believe it was, to not recommend approval of this particular article. As has been discussed there, the Board agrees with the Economic Development Committee's assessment that the article would limit economic growth and have detrimental fiscal impacts on the community, and that the BPH was designed to maximize green space in harmony between the various zoning districts, and also to unify zoning throughout the entire stretch of Route One. With that, the Board of, the Planning Board does not recommend approval of this particular article. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Howard?
Thank you. Judith Howard, District Three. Pretending to Article Four, recently I found out that Talcros, Talcros Point and everything all merged way back in 2001 to Manhattan Commerce Park. And what happened was that, according to the assessors, all of them are different. So it had not come under that one name yet. But the reason that I wanted this to be general residence is to avoid any 60-foot-high buildings, 40-foot-high garage, or an open space lot for unregistered vehicles. So the people who live on Oliver, Coolidge, Winfield, they don't know about having a high-rise at this, a possibility of a high-rise. Moreover, on Route One, there is a sign that says, coming up Manhattan Street, it's the gateway to Norwood Center. It's coming up to Norwood Center. So the reason that I included this parcel of land is to avoid any high-rise buildings as the gateway to Norwood Center from Route One. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. We have a few registered speakers on this one. First one is Mr. Hearn.
Anybody who follows Mark Ryan has to adjust the microphone.
And Mr. Hearn, Nick?
Madam Moderator, David Hearn, District Four. I appear before you this evening as a town meeting representative. I'm also here as the attorney for Crosspoint Associates, which is the group that has managed or owned, and now owns and manages, the property known as 63-65 Manhattan Street. That property, they have been involved with for roughly 40 years. It has had on it, the building that is there now since about 1950. And it predates the houses on Coolidge Ave. by many years. Most of those houses were only built about 20, within the last 20 years or so. There's been discussion this evening about the process that we went through. I agree with Ms. Howard, not often, but sometimes, and I agree with her on one thing, that Route One was desperately in need of rezoning for many years. I argued with the Planning Board for years and years, going back even when Steve Costello was our town planner, that we had such a hodgepodge on Route One. We had general residence, which we still have, but it's controlled by the town, and it's mainly unbuildable. We had trunk highway. We had manufacturing. We had limited manufacturing. We had at least four business districts. And what you could do varied by sometimes a few feet. Big parts of Route One, you couldn't put retail in without going to the zoning board for a special permit. It made no sense. So over a period of years, the Planning Board and residents and town officials and others who are concerned about it worked, and ultimately, it was brought to town meeting in the winter of 2021, when we were meeting remotely. And that was after many, many meetings, public hearings, discussion. Everybody was invited to, reported in the paper. And at the time, in February, I think it was February 2021, when we first did, we did our first remote meeting, there were complaints that nobody knew about this. So it was kicked over till June of 2021. More meetings, more information. And it was overwhelmingly approved by the town meeting in June of 2021. So here we are, less than two years later, and there's some question about undoing it. Now, I don't, I'm not going to speak to what we've dealt with. I stayed out of those. I had no horse in that race. And I know there were good arguments on both sides, and I understand. My client's property, I submit to you, is different from what we've been talking about so far this evening. My client's property has been built up for many years. It predates the houses across the street from it. And it has been used as a commercial property for all those years. Now, you know, we talk about the residential areas of Norwood. I've lived here for nearly 45 years, 40 years this month in the same house. We don't like to move often. Because then you have to pack up and get rid of all the stuff. But this property is part of what contributes to what most of us like about Norwood, that we have low taxes, that we have business that provides employment. Now, when it was put in the Boston-Providence Highway District, it was removed from the manufacturing district. And in doing that, there was more protection created for the neighboring residential areas. Now, folks talk about residential areas abutting commercial. It's going to happen somewhere. It has to. Otherwise, you just have neither one nor the other. But you've got to have it somewhere. So the Boston-Providence Highway District, which with its requirements for an 80-foot buffer between a residential district and the Boston-Providence Highway District, 30 feet of evergreens within that 80-foot area, no building closer than 80 feet from the, from the residential district. The limitations on height that apply, we've heard a lot, all of that is to the benefit of the neighboring residential districts. It provides more control than when it was strictly manufacturing, in the case of my client's property. Now, on the question of height, we've heard a lot, oh, we don't want skyscrapers there. Well, the way the bylaw is written, near a residential area, you've got to be 80 feet back before you can even put a building. And then at that setback, you can only go up 20 feet. And as you go back, you can add a foot for every foot that you go back from the required setback.
Excuse me, Mr. Hearn?
Yes.
You have, your time is up. I assume you want more time? How much more do you need?
I'm speaking so much more slowly than I planned to. May I have three more minutes?
Okay. Ms. Homewood, you're making the motion to give Mr. Hearn three more minutes? Can I have a second? Mr. Slater? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? No?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Hearn?
All right. So this, this slide shows the setback. So in the case of property that is abutting a residential zone, you go back 80 feet. By the time you get to 60 feet, you're 140 feet back. This is not a case where we're going to be building all kinds of skyscrapers on the site. And it sits up over Route One, it does, but it's also probably lower than our downtown Washington Street area, because Manhattan Street goes up, goes down a little bit, then goes back up towards Washington Street. So I don't think people need to think, should really go around with the idea that this is going to be a bunch of skyscrapers. My clients don't necessarily build those things. They're going to build, in any building they do, what makes sense for them and for their prospective tenants. We also have the airport near us, and therefore, we're constrained by the FAA when we talk about building on that site. So separate from zoning, the FAA has control over what might go there. Now, this is a process that, you know, when we did the Boston-Providence Highway District, we did a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of stuff went out to folks. I have to say, there was no legal requirement, but it was a big surprise to my clients when they heard that it was being discussed at the Selectmen's meeting several weeks ago, that somebody had taken it upon herself to try to rezone their property out from under them, property that they have paid millions of dollars in taxes on over the years, that they have contributed to the fabric of our society here in Norwood with providing jobs, providing tax revenue, and so forth. So there's no requirement that that be done, but it wasn't neighborly to try to do that. I want to speak to one other thing. When the Planning Board considered this and voted against it, four opposed one abstention. That same night, there was taken up a preliminary plan before the Planning Board. That preliminary plan, followed by the process of a definitive plan, will put an eight-year freeze on this property. So that if town, even if town meeting voted for this tonight, it would have no effect on this property, and the zoning would be frozen for the next eight years. I tell you that not because we're, you know, trying to play cutesy or anything, but my clients are trying to protect the value of their property that they have acquired and taken care of and used in a suitable fashion all these years. So you're being asked to vote for something that won't take effect, will not affect the current zoning, and would not have any effect possibly for eight years, if at all. Now, Mr. McCormick, Kerry McCormick, who's our Development Director, will speak to some of these matters when the moderator calls on him. He is experienced in these matters and can speak to some of the economic aspects and some of the history of this site. Is Mr. McCormick next, Madam Moderator?
Ms. McCormick happens to be next, Mr. Hearn.
I thought so, but we didn't want to think. So I ask you to vote against this proposal, which is aimed at taking away my client's value and rights in the property. And by the way, this is no way to do zoning. We spent a lot of time on Route One. And if you look at the maps, you'll see Route One, Boston-Providence Highway District, Cadillac, Madden Ford, this property. I don't speak to the other property at the other corner, the other side of the circle. That stands in a different posture. But I ask you to reject the attempt to rezone this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. And Mr. McCormick, Kerry McCormick?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Kerry McCormick, Director of Development with Crosspoint Associates. Crosspoint is a commercial real estate company that's locally based in Newton, Massachusetts, with properties throughout the Northeast. Crosspoint has owned and managed the property before you tonight for the 26-acre parcel for over four decades. We would like to state upfront that we are obviously in opposition of the rezoning from Boston-Providence Highway to general residential. Not to, less than two years ago, this property was actually zoned manufacturing. So as Mr. Hearn stated, it is quite a different state than the parcels that were zoned general, or zoned residential. This was actually manufacturing, and it has had a property, manufacturing property onsite since the 1950s. I'm sure some remember, but it was the Mason Nealon property originally. So it has been a well-established manufacturing and office property for multitude of years. And up until the end of February 2023, the property was occupied by TE Connectivity, and we've been working really hard to come up with what the next generation... and we've been working really hard to come up with what the next generation of that building will be. We put a lot of time and effort into kind of the planning for the next stage. Obviously, it's been in use by TE Connectivity for twenty-plus years. It's going to need some refresh. So I think some of the concerns are, it may not look beautiful now, but I think the next generation of its use will have some changes to it that hopefully the community will appreciate. Unfortunately, with the changes to the financial market, it has been a little bit of challenging to, to come up with the next tenant. Obviously, financial rates have increased, life science market has kind of softened. So we are working our hardest to try to find out what the next tenant will be at this location. But one thing is really clear, is that this is a great location, great location for a Boston Providence Highway use, is, has direct access off of Route One, not just at the Rotary, but we have direct access off of a slip ramp by the Bock Nissan site. So you can actually get into our site in the future directly off of Route One. So it is a Route One property. It is also less than one mile walk down to Dunkin' Donuts and Shaw's, and then on to downtown. So it would be a perfect opportunity to have that mixed-use environment that could be very well sustained at this location. And then, just quickly talking about, again, the tax base, that, you know, I know taxes and revenue to the town aren't everybody's best interest. It's maintaining open space. As you can see, this is a 200,000-square-foot building existing on the site. It's twenty-six acres, but it is already substantially occupied by a manufacturing building. We, obviously, as we noted, there's going to have to be buffers as it is. We are also limited by the airport, actually flies directly over our building, so I don't know what kind of residential use really wants to be at this location. We are also limited by that flight path to well below sixty feet in some areas because of the flight path restriction on that, on that building. So the, the scare tactic of having this considered, skyscrapers is kind of over, over-exaggerated.
Hey.
I don't know what I said was funny, but, um, so, just one more point. So the, I, I think, as most people are well aware, the residential tax base is, is much lower than what the commercial tax base is. So we are actually taxed at a rate of about two and a quarter higher. So the residential tax base is 10.32, $10.32 per thousand. We're actually taxed at $23.07 per thousand. Over the last year, we were, we paid, contributed to the town's tax basis $364,000. If you look at what a residential revenue or benefit to the town, granted you get people, but it's actually a cost detriment to the town to the tune of, you know, it costs 20,000 today, in today's dollars, 20,000 per pupil. So if you average one pupil per house, you're looking at a negative tax basis. So we are providing services to the town. We do not demand trash removal, snowplow efforts, and all that. So it's, you look at it that way, too, that there's going to be substantial change in, in, in tax revenue to the town. So we hope, all of this, before you, you vote to oppose the, the motion to support our force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. All right, that exhausts the registered speakers that we have. Mr. Hall.
Couple of points. The rationale from the proposers for this article is completely different from what it was for the previous two articles. This is about using zoning as a weapon to prevent tall buildings. Whether there's a danger of it or not is a matter for some discussion. It has nothing to do with protecting trees or legacy homes or anything like that. It's strictly this. What it does is it replaces commercial land with general residential land. Now, I'm at, the original overlay district in the center of Norwood was developed in its current form to allow for setbacks in taller buildings with further setbacks. Suppose that this passes, and this is now recognized as an acceptable tactic to prevent tall buildings from coming in when nothing else works. Let's suppose the owner of a downtown store like Perks, or maybe a whole building block, decides that they want to get out of it and get into some other kind of property, and in comes a zoning proposal that says, well, no, we're going to replace that block with a zoning for general residential. Nobody's going to build homes there. It's strictly a blocking. It's not about what's going to be there, it's about what should not be there. It's, in a way, it's tearing the cover off the kind of, using zoning as a tactic rather than a planning device, that in my opinion, at least, all three of these articles suffered from, but it's just more flagrant in this case. So I would hope people will vote against it, or you'll be unleashing something that we won't like in another couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Ms. Donahue?
Helen Donahue, District Six. When the trunk highway B was proposed, this was a big discussion about whether or not this parcel should be included in, in the rezoning, because it's a huge parcel. It, it's really, there's, all the other zoning for trunk highway B is much, much less along Route One. And as Mr. Hall said, this is really trying to force a rezoning. So, now here's the second step to that. If we, I'm thinking I might vote for it, for the reason is that for eight years, it would have to remain manufacturing use. And if, if, this gives the owner of the property eight years to develop the property according to our wonderful zoning bylaw that already exists for manufacturing uses. This would give the Board of Appeal much more power to control the use of the property, so we could avoid one of those types of zoning along the height and the foot and all that increasing. And like, say, I think it's 20 feet now, height restriction, and, and this would impose much more control. So I'm sitting here thinking, maybe I should vote for it, just so it'll keep manufacturing for eight years.
Thank you. Ms. Neil Rizzo?
Katie Neil Rizzo, District Two. I thought you were ignoring me. I would like to point out that the 63 Manhattan Street, Lot 83, is one of Norwood's 90 open gas leaks currently. It was reported in 2016. It has not been repaired. This is adding to the burden of gas leaks in Norwood. That is putting 41.9 metric, metric tons of methane, equivalent to 3,604 metric tons of carbon dioxide into our environment. So whether or not Algonquin Company does a good job of making sure there's any building sites are being properly looked at before buildings are erected. National Grid is not repairing these gas leaks across our town in any sort of timely fashion. This is very old, and perhaps as you're fixing up this property for your next tenant, you also address the gas leak that is hurting the environment in Norwood.
Mr. Hearn, do you want to respond to that?
David Hearn, District Four. Madam Moderator, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. Number one, this is not the manufacturing district. It became part of the Boston Providence Highway District two years ago, so entirely different rules with bigger buffers. So the reference to manufacturing, I think, was an unintentional error, a, a couple of speakers ago. As far as the gas leak that Ms. Neil Rizzo referred to, my clients have, do not have knowledge of that, and if it's a matter of National Grid, we should not be tarred with the faults, if, if they are faults, of National Grid. So I, I want to make it clear that this is not something that we're ignoring. This is the first, my clients who manage the property have heard of it. Maybe a tenant knew about it, don't know. Maybe National Grid knows about it, but not the owners of this property. Thank you for the clarif, opportunity to make a clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Mr. Hopcraft?
Francis Hopcraft, District One. It's my understanding that if there is a change in the zoning, that the existing uses, which now might become non-conforming, could continue to be done as non-conforming uses in the future, unless they stop to be used for that purpose. Is that correct, or does that suddenly impose a new set of restrictions on the existing property, uses?
Do we want Mr. Hearn to take that, or does the town want to take that? Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, this property does enjoy pre-existing uses. It is a non-conforming use, structures on the property would be protected.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
... significant change what the owners could do on that parcel if we changed this to residential. They already have a non-existing, a, a non-conforming existing use for residential property. Correct?
Okay. We're in the back.
George Staranti, District Three. Thank you, Madam Moderator. I agree with Mr. Hall's points that he made earlier on this. I, I think there is another critical component that we need to consider, one that has longstanding implications. I, and, and I think, you know, we enjoy our quality of life here in Norwood because of private investment, because of private business, right? We have, we're constantly striving to, to find that balance. And in this case here, I think, you know, one, one thing, one thing that, that makes your community a place that, that folks want to invest in is predictability. And we spent a lot of time going through this zoning, years, as a body here, and through our public officials. And I think when you, when you spot change a massive parcel like this, that is, that has had a commercial use for so long, you are signaling to the private investment community and the private business community that you're not a place that is predictable, right? And, and I believe that we would be shooting ourselves in the foot for a long time, where we to, to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lane?
Madam Moderator, Matt Lane, District Four. Very much along the same lines. I was just going to try and articulate a little bit better, probably than the first time I spoke, but that we enacted the, this new district in 2021 to promote economic growth. And I think, like the previous speaker mentioned, if we start to go back on that, and I'm, I'm not saying that Ms. Hogan and her neighbors did not make a great argument, and I'm glad that it passed for you. I, I think that the precedent that it sets is that we are, you know, okay, come forward and, and build your, your, your business here, but there's always a chance we could go back on it. You know, I know that zoning is not perfect, for sure, and it's really hard to please both sides, but I think here, especially with this particular article, even more so than the previous articles, that if we do vote to change this, it's, it's a bad signal to send to the, the, the business community. And the letter that we have been referencing from the Economic Development Committee, it does attach a, a number, a fiscal number for these decisions that we've been making, and there are dollar amounts tied to them. So when we do not vote for things, or in this case, when, when we vote to change the zoning, that has a real financial implication, which, you know, you'll see later on in town meeting, that there, there are issues that we're going to have to address with revenue. So it's, I think that, just asking for people to really consider the long-term implications of, of this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Ms. Taylor?
Madam Moderator, Ms. Taylor, is the day at the...
Second? All right, Mr. McFarland, all in favor of moving the question, say aye. All opposed, say no. Unanimous. All right, this is also a two-thirds vote. Article Four is to amend the official zoning map set forth in the warrant, except for the deletion of the following: map 18, Block 6, Lot 74 through 80 inclusive; map 18, Block 7, Lot 46, and the words, "Or take any other action in that, in this matter." All right. I'm going to exercise your arms again, ladies and gentlemen, and I apologize. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed. All right, I'm going to call it. Motion carries 120? Oh, motion fails, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was so excited. Motion fails five to 130. All right, Mr. Slater, you've had a little rest. Moving on to Article Five. And I think the FinCom has, you have a slide first?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before I get into discussion of any of the financial articles, and this, this particular slide is in the package that you received on comments you're going to make on the annual, but I just wanted people to know before they vote on any of the motions for the special, what our reserves look like now and what they would look like following any of the votes which we're going to take. Essentially, it shows that we will use quite a bit of free cash. We will have free cash remaining. We will have free cash recertified in the fall, a much larger number. Regular stabilization will remain at a high level, but we will be using a significant amount of the override stabilization, both in the special as well as the annual town meeting. Again, this is assuming people vote for the recommendations of the Finance Commission. So with that, and before I, before I read this, Madam Moderator, would you like me to read each individual item, or will it be sufficient if it's up on, on the screen for people to, to see?
I think in the interest of time, Mr. Slater, we will be happy to have you read the sum.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Article Five, motion moved by the FinCom, move that the sum of $1,168,000 be transferred from departmental shortfalls and capital project closeouts and appropriated for the purposes of internal transfers as follows. And I think you will see a list of funds needed for various departments, adding up to $1,168,000, as well as a list of available funds equaling the same amount. I think as people see that...
Well, hold on, Mr. Slater, I think Mrs. Bodenhoffer is seconding.
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Slater, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I think as people can see, the funds that are needed primarily for the fire department, these are all funds which have been reviewed, and these, these numbers are correct. Primarily, it's retroactive from a settled contract, as well as overtime, excuse me, excuse me, overtime, primarily due to firefighters injured on duty, as well as one in the academy, as well as added costs due to training to personnel as paramedics. You know, we've reviewed these, you know, we agree with the numbers. You know, we've reviewed these, you know, we agree with the numbers. But one thing that I think the FinCom would like to note is that, you know, the fire contract was signed over a year ago. And our belief at the time was that there were sufficient funds to cover the retroactive. And we really weren't made aware of the overtime and substitution issue. And we only learned about this late in March. At the time, we really weren't, until then, we really weren't informed of either the need or the extent of the problem. And this really shouldn't have happened. If we had known about the problem earlier, maybe we would have approached budget balancing differently. You know, don't know whether we would or we would have, but that's certainly a possibility. But although it was late in the game, the town was able to put together a financial package, the funnest request in time, in order to get it into the warrant for the special town meeting. So I think the town as a whole would like to use this as a learning experience and develop appropriate safeguards so something like this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Ms. Quinn? There are no registered speakers on this, so I'm just going to call on raised hands.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Oh, sorry, Sarah Quinn, District Two.
Thank you.
Um, no. I guess I am a little concerned that you were caught off guard by this request, which is substantial. I appreciate that the fire department has their contract settled. But why were you, as the Finance Commission, not aware or uninformed until March? I'm not sure what the chain of communication is for that. That's part one.
Mr. Slater, you want to respond to that? Or would you like the selectmen to respond to that? Or the general manager?
I would prefer that the selectmen and general manager would reply to that.
Prefer that the general manager replies?
[laughter] Mr. Mizuka, would you like to reply to that?
I was going to make a joke about preferring the fire chief respond to that, but I'll take it. A couple of items. So this was a contract that, on the one hand, wasn't settled until August. But the process for a public safety contract is actually complicated. It takes time to agree on actual wage tables after that. So even though we sign a contract, it isn't boom, you're done. The retro gets paid the next day. It took quite some time to get the retro calculations done. The town and the union have to agree on the wage scales. By this point, you're well into the holidays before we had a settled contract. We knew what we would be paying. And even then, it's still complicated when you're looking at fire payroll or police payroll. They're very, they're complicated. It's not as simple as, hey, somebody made $60,000 last year, they're owed 2%. There's so many different categories and large pays and pays at different times throughout the year. It's relatively complicated. We do try to plan for this ahead of time. This round of bargaining, believe it or not, the prep for it and the planning began before COVID. So the fall before COVID or the spring before COVID, we had settled two of nine contracts. We had nine unions at the time. And then COVID hit, and this is actually finishing a process that started prior to COVID. Normally, you have a bit of a better planning timeline. You know the next three-year timeline. This has just been a difficult result of a lengthy planning period. That's not the norm.
Follow-up, Mrs. Quinn?
I have a follow-up and then my second question. So as a follow-up, I guess my understanding was the shift to munis was going to help with sort of accounting and accountability because we were tracking things better. We weren't using some archaic system? Is that, is this something that we're not able to project out or see that will? Like, moving forward, is this going to happen again? Or are we going to have a better sense of how these things will play out?
I'll never say, sorry, thank you. I'll never say never, but again, that timeline was we had settled some contracts prior to COVID. So what our financial projections were and what we were thinking we were going to do pre-COVID versus by the time things got settled was a little screwy. I don't think that will happen again, but it shouldn't. The software, I don't think, has an impact on it. It's more about you don't know, I mean, you can reasonably project what you think you're going to pay in a contract and how you're going to put money aside. Once that drags on for time and time, it becomes a little bit more complicated. And then you're sort of holding on to money. You don't know if you need it, you don't know where it's going.
Thank you. My second question has to do with the available funds. It's a bit concerning to me that there's, the capital projects have so much leftover money. That makes me think we didn't budget properly in the first place. And I'm wondering, where did those funds come from? If they were free cash, shouldn't they go back to free cash? And then we vote on what we want to do with them again? Or did we borrow?
Mr. Mizuka?
So just to be clear, none of these were borrowing projects. Money from borrowing projects can never be appropriated to anything else other than other borrowing projects. In terms of capital project closeout, it's always a catch-22 in terms of you have an estimate, how much do you want to actually put up? If we get a quote from a vendor four months before a town meeting that a system replacement is going to cost $74,000, you reasonably need to build in some wiggle room. Otherwise, we're coming back to town meeting saying, hey, we undershot it. So it's never a perfect amount. Some of these projects in particular, the fire department did a great job in receiving some grant funding to offset. And that's why you have some significant cost savings in a couple of those projects. Some of the closeout, sorry, some of the projects that get canceled, because sometimes a capital project does get canceled. And even though we get an appropriation from town meeting, if it comes to the point where we're going to do that project and we feel that something has changed and maybe that project shouldn't be done, we don't just go spend the money because it's been appropriated. It's always sort of evaluated, where do we need, where are we? We tend to pull, last year, I think, we pulled what overages we need to move out of debt service because candidly, it was easy to do. That sometimes happens. The general government budget usually turns back $1,200,000, $1,500,000 a year. It ends up getting spread out over eighty, ninety budget lines. And it's tough that we need to sort of have information ready by mid-March for everyone to make a decision on. So it gets finalized in April, and then we vote on it in May with two months still in the left in the fiscal year.
Just my last follow-up, well, on this, I promise. Which of these projects were canceled? I lost the microphone, man.
The airport vegetation, the holding cell toilet replacement, and the public safety carpeting and flooring. And some of those were, these had previously been in the capital plan prior to having a facilities department. And they either, the carpeting, for instance, and the flooring, that's being held off until we finish the HVAC system. That'll be a couple of years until we would be beating on those parts of the building. Some of them are just the facilities department was able to go in, work together. Candidly, when we started facilities, we hired some vendors. We already have people we'd be contracting the workout to. That's led to a significant savings. And sometimes there is a change in leadership in a department that makes a project more difficult to do. The cemetery project closeout, for instance, is a combination of a retirement in that department where candidly, we used to get some really great work done at the expense of some of the staff in the department. That's changed. We also have, with that particular garage, we have a storage issue townwide. The schools don't have enough space to store stuff. Public safety doesn't have enough space to store stuff. Other town governments don't. And we're concerned about some edits to that building that might reduce the overall storage space that we have.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing nothing further, let's put it to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote. Sorry, folks, because it involves stabilization as one of the funding sources. So again, move that the sum of $1,168,000 be transferred from department shortfalls, capital project closeout, and appropriated for the purpose of internal transfers as followed in the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous, motion carries. Article Six by the FinCom again, Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the FinCom that the appropriation of the sum of $110,000 for the renovation of the lobby at the Civic Center, voted by the October eighteenth, 2021 Norwood Special Town Meeting, under Article Two be rescinded, and that the appropriation for renovation of the women's locker room at the Civic Center, voted by the October eighteenth, 2021 Norwood Special Town Meeting, under Article Two be increased by the sum of $110,000.
And Ms. Bodenhoffer, you're seconding?
Seconding, yes.
Mr. Slater on the motion?
Again, I think your Yellow Sheet will explain this. Essentially, the money associated with the renovation of the lobby and the women's locker room is being combined into one article now for a total of $320,000. This project was also brought before the Capitol Outlay Committee. And the Capitol Outlay Committee confirmed their support of this project. And, you know, after that, the Finance Commission voted also by unanimous vote to approve the project.
Mr. Connolly, Capitol Outlay did approve?
Yes. Yes, Madam Moderator. We met on April the twenty-seventh to formally take a vote to rescind the project associated with the lobby renovation. And we voted also on April twenty-seventh to support the application of the $110,000 for the lobby project to the women's locker room project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything? Mr. Bodenhoffer?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Eric Bodenhoffer, District Nine. I have absolutely no objection to women getting a good locker room at the Civic Center. But I just have a question. In the explanation here, it talks about that there's an increase in early childhood programming, which may result in different space needs. And I'm wondering if we've looked at the building in its totality, whether it would make sense to pause this project, look at things we might need to do in a year or two years, and tackle them as a single project? It seems to me that there might be economies of scale in materials and the like, rather than doing it piecemeal. So just wondering if we've given any thought to what these changes in space needs might mean and whether we should be taking those into consideration before we reallocate the lobby money to the locker room.
Mr. Mizuka, are you taking that one?
Sure. Thank you. So just to remind everyone, the history of the Civic, it's been our Civic for about forty years. It was a mass National Guard building for fifty or sixty years before that. The needs are what we want to use the building for. It's not, I mean, where programming goes is much more of a decision than, let's say, it is at a school where if you've got four hundred kids, you've got to find space for those four hundred kids. If we had space issues, you can make some programming decisions. A start-to-finish renovation of the building, I don't know if it would yield us comprehensively any more space because of the way the building is built and the different components that it has to have. The room adjacent to the lobby that a lot of earlier childhood education programs, and education's probably not the right word, but where those get done, that used to be, some of you will remember, engineering used to be down there, detectives used to be down there. There used to be a registry of motor vehicles branch down there. It had been hacked up for many years into a couple of different offices just with some simple drywall. About four or five years ago, there hadn't been anything in the offices in there for quite a while with some donations and through volunteer work. The staff was able to get that to be one large room. So we have a place for some of the top programs. On the one hand, those seem to be very popular and growing. They're not really going to be able necessarily expand much greater than they are. We couldn't blow out half the building and make any significant changes to the interior structure of the building. So if you were to try to do a top-to-bottom renovation of the Civic, I just don't know that you'd get anything out of that other than an enormous cost and really not a significant space change if you're not going to get rid of the workout area, which we wouldn't want to do, or the gym. One of the other items that's changed is the rec department has started for the February, April vacation, took over the extended day programming. And that might be something that they do a little bit more. The school department had requested if we could help out with it. If we're going to do more programs like that in time, maintaining that separate lobby has a benefit. Or that if you go into the ground level of the Civic, it sort of closes off that area. There's some benefits to be able to do that. Whether we expand it to additional childhood programs, I don't think it would be anything significant. What really drove this was looking at both projects and what we needed to do. The lobby would be nice to have a nice wider opener lobby. We're trying to save money and make sure we're doing, we're being as fastidious as we can with the taxpayer dollar. Renovating the whole building, I don't think, would be something in the future that, other than what the building needs, probably not something we would look to do.
Just one follow-up statement. I wasn't necessarily saying we had to renovate the entire building. I'm just wondering if there are other spaces within the building that a year from now, we're going to be back here asking for money, and we might be able to leverage that.
Yeah, great question. In this case, I don't think so, because if you look at what we're doing now, it's a lobby and a completely separate women's locker room. The kitchen, if you've ever seen the kitchen where they do some classes in the Civic, is certainly older. That's something we're going to look at. It's a whole different part of the building, different facility. So it's not, I don't think there'd be any economies of scale because you'd sort of be pickpocketing different parts of the building that might need work, and totally different work.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Ms. Sobchak? She's right over there.
Amy Sobchak, District Four. Just curious, approximately how many people actually use this $300,000 locker room?
Mr. Kenny, do you?
Okay, thank you. John Kenny, New Recreation Superintendent. He and Sam, the Assistant Director, might be able to give you an idea of the total clientele that we have that visit the gym and use the locker room and take classes and use the locker room. But it is in the Yellow Sheet. I do want to remind everyone, we did do the men's locker room over several years ago. So we are just trying to make sure we're maintaining equitable services in our facilities. John or Sam, do you have any?
John, if you're, Mr. Kenny, if you're saying anything, can you come to a mic?
Yeah. Kevin can bring him a mic.
Since Mrs. Sobchak doesn't seem to be giving it up.
Just try to approach it from here. When you turn the mic around, it'll, it's on.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Kenny, can you please identify yourself? So even though Mr. Mizuka did, we just want to make sure we know who you are.
Sorry, John Kenny, Superintendent of Recreation, newbie. The answer to your question, we probably have about 700 or so members that come in and use the gym, not every day, of course, registered. So, you know, depending on the day, you know, it's, if I was to guess, you know, thirty to fifty women are coming in through the doors to use the gym and the facilities. I couldn't tell you honestly how many walk into that locker room and go. So I'm not going to throw a number out there for you. But as the town manager said, you know, we did do the men's locker room several years ago. If you've been into the Civic and have taken a look at the locker room, like, you would definitely want to see an upgrade. And I know that, you know, we're in a budget, and we're trying to keep, you know, money moving in a positive direction. So, you know, I would, I would definitely think that we should put the money into this and upgrade the facility.
Follow-up, Mrs. Sobchak?
Back to what Mr. Bodenhoffer said, maybe piggybacking over that. Have we thought about doing any sort of town-wide building study to see if we can make sure that what we, the space we're utilizing and the money we're sinking into these buildings is actually in the appropriate places?
Mr. Mizuka?
In terms of a town-wide space study, we could look at something like that. The challenge is, we rarely, if ever, have facilities that we would shut down. So it's not like a school regionalization study or a school district study. You might say, hey, we've got nine buildings, we can go down. We're always going to have the public safety building and some tweaks within there. The Civic, at some point, we should probably look at a whole new Civic. I don't know if it would be on that site. That's something that I think would be great for the community to look at down the road. But if we're going to operate a Civic, it's going to be in that building. Same thing with Town Hall and other buildings. In terms of the maintenance of the buildings, the facilities department does take a comprehensive look at what the needs of different buildings are. Last year at town meeting, we appropriated, for instance, a roof study, which is the beginning of looking at our physical core systems of our buildings, where we're looking at all of our roofs and getting an aging system, getting an age of the systems and what's needed for each building.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Right back there, again.
Steve Rogers, District One, move the question?
Do I have a second? Second? All right, Mr. Connolly. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no? All right, that brings us back to the motion to reappropriate, I'm going to make it simple, $110,000 that had been previously appropriated and move it over to use to renovate the women's locker room. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Mr. Slater? No, actually, Mr. Lane, Article Seven.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town vote to abandon any interest held by the town in an easement located on the property at 55 Lennox Street, Norwood. Said easement is described as a sewer easement in a deed from Rose Nezick to William D. Fisk and Olive A. Fisk dated January fifteenth, 1965, and recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds at Book Forty-two, Thirty-five, page eighty-three. Said easement is shown as drain easement on a plan entitled Subdivision Plan of Land Norwood, mass scale one inch to thirty feet, June eleventh, 1971, J.F. Hennessy, C.E., Brookline, Mass, which plan is filed with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds as Plan Number Nine-Six-Five of 1971 at Book Forty-seven, Ninety-two, page five oh seven. This vote is contingent upon the following conditions. One, all costs of removal of the pipe, restoration of the area of said removal, and any other work related to said removal shall be done by the landowner and its agents and representatives. the landowner and its agents and representatives at their expense. Two, the town of Norwood shall not incur any expense or liability for such removal, restoration, or any related work. And three, prior to the commencement of any such work described in Condition 1 above, the landowner shall indemnify and hold harmless the town of Norwood and all of its officers, employees, boards, commissions, and committees from and against all claims, causes of action, litigation, damages, and liabilities of any kind which arise out of the work described in Condition 1 above.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. And Mr. Connolly, you're seconding. Thank you. Mr. Lane, on the motion?
On the motion, Madam Moderator. We have our town engineer right here. I think he would be a great person to talk about this. From my perspective, it's pretty simple. We're just asking town meeting to grant the authority to abandon the drain easement of the Norwood Tire property. And again, this is at no cost to us, and we will still have oversight, which I believe Mr. Ryan will speak to.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Mark Ryan, Director of Public Works, town engineer. As Mr. Lane said, there's a drain easement that was benefiting the town of Norwood that ran from Railroad Ave across property, which is now Lennox Station condominiums, through Norwood DPW property, and then through the property of Norwood Tire. When Norwood Crossing was constructed, a portion of that on their property of that easement was, was no longer needed. In the development of that project, rerouted the drain down Railroad Ave and then down Lennox Street. The drain that continued through the town of Norwood property, the DPW portion on Lennox Street and the Norwood Tire, did have to stay in service to service some drainage areas on the Lennox Station property. So that drain easement isn't in effect across the Norwood Tire property. It is needed to benefit the drain that's coming from the Lennox Station area through the Norwood easement. This proposal is just to reroute that easement on the Norwood Tire property. Right now, it goes right through the middle of the property, as you can see in yellow. It was recently sold to a Norwood businessperson who would like to make the best use of that property. So they're going to reroute the drain to the property line to the, right along there, to the, I guess, the northerly side of the Norwood Tire property, and then along the front edge of Lennox Street. So the drain function will stay in effect. It'll just be rerouted, and that easement that shows in yellow will be abandoned, and DPW and engineering is supportive of this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Let's put it to a vote, and this is a simple majority. All in favor of the motion on Article 7 to abandon the sewer drainage easement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 8, I believe, Mr. Slater, we're coming to you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moved by the FinCom that the town appropriate $7 million to pay costs of upgrading the municipal light department's capacity to provide redundant power to a large industrial customer of the light department currently engaged in expanding its presence within the town here and after the customer, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, subject to the appropriate recovery of such costs through rates and charges applied under the oversight of the Board of Selectment in their capacity as electric light commissioners and pursuant to one or more agreements with the customer acceptable to the light commissioners, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow $7 million under and pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 8, Parenthesis 8A, or any other enabling authority and to issue general obligation bonds or notes of the town therefore.
All righty. And Mr. Lane, I think we have you seconding this on behalf of the Board of Selectment. Thank you. Mr. Slater, on the motion?
Again, if you look at the Yellow Sheet, I think it explains it pretty clearly. We use the term "large industrial customer." You know, we can't name who that is. I think, you know, you could probably figure that out. But I will note, and it's one of the important provisions, is that this will be of no cost to the town. All costs incidental to this project, including, you know, engineering-related costs, bond-related costs, et cetera, will be paid for by the, by the customer.
Thank you, Mr. Slater. Mr. Shaughnessy, do you have anything on this, or just address questions? Okay, we'll address questions. All right, on the motion. Mr. Shea.
Richard Shea, District 1. Through you, Madam Moderator, can someone explain why we can't name the customer? It seems rather strange for us to be appropriating $7 million. I think I know what it's for, and I would urge you to approve it if I'm right, but I don't understand why we can't know the name of the customer who is requesting the town to risk $7 million, when if we knew who it was, we would almost certainly say sure. But can somebody explain why? That's all.
Mr. Shaughnessy, are you going to take that one? Or is Mr. Mizuko going to take that one?
Madam Moderator, I think Mr. Mizuko is going to take that one.
This is, this is Mr. Mizuko's night to field the questions.
Yeah. So just very briefly, there's usually, companies like this have a clause that they don't want their name released because it's for competitive reasons. We also try to encourage them to, or we try to offer a commercial customer the same courtesy we would any of you. We don't talk about service being done at your house. There may be something that's a matter of public record, but I don't say, you know, hey, we're at Richard's house today, and tomorrow we're going to Ann's house, and, you know, Ann wanted to see if a line could be brought in the back. Again, as a courtesy, we do follow that we won't name the customer, but...
Given that, and given the probability that I'm guessing correctly, and actually having been partly responsible for a much less significant facility with the same requirements, I urge you to approve this, both for the sake of the town and the rest of the planet.
Thank you. Mr. Shea?
Yeah.
Ms. Churchill?
Thank you. Rachel Churchill, District 5. I'm generally in support of this. I just had a question. I'm not anticipating this would ever be an issue, but in the event that this particular landowner were to move, is this contract, does it run with the land? Or is there any enforcement ability, should they, this particular customer vacate the property, that we would still be able to recover these funds? Thank you.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Madam Moderator. Yes, we would, there's a process that we have to go through. Right now, we're kind of in the middle of it. We've done an engineered estimate. We would go back to this customer once we've gone to bid and we have actual costs. And at that point, we would try and get an energy service agreement. And in that agreement, we would have provisions. You know, we obviously don't have an agreement now, but typically, it would be a letter of credit. It could also be a guarantee from the parent company. In this case, the customer is the parent company. And they would be responsible, you know, if they were to leave in the middle of it, whatever is then owed, the remaining portion of it. But that could also be negotiated in the deal. We may, we could possibly allow them more time. There's also, and typically, and I'll have to say, I've never done one of these agreements, but we've looked at quite a few now because we know it's coming. We could accelerate the payments if they were to not be a customer, or they were bought out, or something like that. So we will, we will be covered. And of course, the light department is responsible for the payments. So even though it's a general obligation bond, and the ratepayers are still responsible.
Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Yes, sir. Wait for the mic, please.
Bar Peshi, District 4. Has the town ever done anything like this in the past?
Mr. Shaughnessy?
Madam Moderator, I'm not aware of any energy service agreement in the past. I know there have been large customers. For instance, the customer that was there before the customer I'm speaking about
[laughing]
had an unusual service. In other words, they had feeders directly from our substation, which we would, I certainly would consider unusual, but there was no agreement in place.
So I think I know who the customer is. And if I was to hazard a guess, their financials look pretty good. They had net income of $8 billion in 2022. Why is this company asking the town to play banker and fund this project for them? Has anybody asked that question?
We're going to have Mr. Shaughnessy answer it.
Actually, they're not asking. So we're a business, and when we look at a project like this, particularly my group, we're looking what's best for, for us, what's best for us. In this case, because we can add, this is, this isn't a direct, a direct assignment of costs. We can then recover the costs, which means interest and the principal of that, and we can also make money on it. So in addition to the feeders and the underground cable that we would provide, you know, as part of this deal, they're actually asking for redundancy. So in other words, what they have now, we feel is adequate, more than adequate. It's, it's a very good service. They want more than that, so they want redundancy. And they are going to pay for it. So that's what we've decided. It also makes it easier for us as far as going out to bid and so forth. So it really is a business decision. Once we have an agreement, of course, it has to go to Tony and the board, but we've thought a lot about it, and we feel like this is the best way to do it.
So did the customer ask us to do this? I mean, if they wanted to borrow the money, why didn't they go to, you know, conventional means instead of asking the town?
The light department is, so in other words, this would be from, from the substation at, we call it the Ellis Substation. It's really the McDonald's substation on Route 1. It's near, it'd be close to University Ave.
Right.
So that we'd be running it from there up Ellis Ave and down Washington Street. So this is, it's underground, manholes and duck banks and cable, and that's where the significant cost is. In addition to that, they're taking up space that we would, as I said, it's redundant. So if they were looking for two extra feeders, there's 18 feeders in that substation. So to me, 1/11 of that is now on them. So...
My question is, the customer wanted a special service. It's going to cost $7 million, approximately $7 million. They should pay for that, but instead of going to conventional means for financing it, they've asked the town to finance it. It seems very unusual to me.
Mr. Mizuko, can you check that?
And there's no precedent for it.
Sure. There is. It's common in energy services agreements. This is our work. It's our infrastructure, and it's our equipment, and that's the important thing to remember. So this is, this additional service, we are going to own these lines, and it's part of our infrastructure. It's just as if we did an addition to our building. We're going to own it. So it's important that we have to pay for it, whether it was borrowing or cash. Quite frankly, if they were even to give us cash, there's some concerns about how the finances are supposed to flow for a municipality in the light department. We also have to follow certain procurement processes, so we have to control and own the process from the whole, from the beginning. So it has to be our process. We've never done one this large before. We work with commercial clients all the time on what's needed and what they need to install, and what we need to do to get their power to where we want it to be. How they're actually going to pay for this on their end is really up to them, as long as we get our checks, so to speak. And as Mr. Shaughnessy explained, the town's going to get interest. We're going to get our costs. We're able to spread that cost out and continue to take the cash. If you think about, and you could argue with the time value of money, do we get a check for $7 million, or do we go ahead and borrow this? We're getting that plus the interest back over time. It financially is going to work out for the light department.
But it's a debt that the town is incurring.
Correct.
So what is, what is in place?
Hold on.
Yep.
Am I hearing a point of information? Mr. Shaughnessy?
Yes, Madam Moderator. Thank you. So I think, I don't think I mentioned it, but we also want to get our return on plant. So that if we did it the way you're suggesting, if they paid for it, we would not be able to do that. Does that make any sense? So we, by general law, we're allowed to make return on plant.
I just see an additional debt to the town of $7 million.
Okay.
Miss?
So what guarantees are in place today, if approved by the town, that we secured either the land or something? It sounds like we're going to basically have blind faith that the, that you'll protect the town from any default. Is there anything in place today?
As I stated, we would get an energy service agreement with, with the customer, and then we would bring it to the board for their approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly? All right, do I have a second?
No.
All right. All in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, that takes us to the motion. This is a two-thirds majority because it's borrowing, and again, that the town appropriates $7 million to pay costs of upgrading municipal lights capacity. Thanks. There we go. As per the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Shaughnessy. Article 9, Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Motion by the FinCom, move that the sum of $117,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes of school IT capital requests, and further, that the sum of $212,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes of school special education vehicles.
And Mrs. Bodenhoffer, you're seconding, correct?
Correct.
All right. Mr. Slater, I believe you wanted to, well, I'll let you say it. Go ahead.
No, I, you know, just wanted to mention that in particular, you know, one of the concerns of the timeframe associated with the vehicles and the importance of doing that now, but I would defer any other comments to the school department.
And I also think Mr. Connolly might have wanted to say something on this from capital outlay standpoint?
I think you are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, yeah, so town meeting members will realize that normally we do have capital requests submitted to the Capital Outlay Committee in the fall for consideration, but there are circumstances associated with both these requests that require action now. The Capital Outlay Committee did meet on March 7, 2023, to consider these two capital requests from the school department. I'll get into some specifics and leave the rest to the school department. The first request is for $117,000 for network switches and equipment replacement in the Norwood High School computer labs. This request is submitted now rather than the fall, so that the, the school is, can take advantage of the discounted price pricing offered through the E-Rate program, which is available now. It also allows the school department to get this work done during the summer when school is in recess. The second request, and by the way, that is, this is not the first time that IT requests from the school have come in the springtime, so it's not unusual. The second request is for the purchase of two mini buses for the school department. Right now, the transportation unit is, is pretty stretched. They're utilizing every vehicle the department has in its possession, and there are no spare vehicles. By purchasing these two units, two mini buses, there is about an 18-month or more wait time for the delivery. So it's pretty evident that the plan is, the need is for that, that to be met now, even with that long wait time. So both projects and their costs were approved by the Capital Outlay on the March 7 date, as I indicated earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Any questions? Mr. Brody? Mr. Brody.
Steve Brody, District Four. I was wondering if these buses, if they're going to be electric, electric buses, please.
Mr., Dr. Thompson is shaking his head no.
Is there any plans for the school department to try to convert to electric buses or purchase electric buses as the needs come up in the future, please?
Dr. Thompson, you want to grab a microphone?
Right here.
Maybe Mr. Brody's microphone.
Yes, the...
And you're Dr. Thompson, Superintendent?
Dr. Thompson, Superintendent of Schools, thank you. Yes, in the future, but they need, right now, these type of buses are not electrified. They're just working on the larger buses, which we currently do not own. We, we, we do those through, through an outside contractor.
Follow-up, Mr. Brody.
Yes, thank you. I have heard that even the smaller buses are now becoming electrified, so I don't understand why they can't be looked into for these smaller buses that are going to be purchased, please.
Mr. Mizuka is going to take it.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. A couple of things. It's important to remember that electric vehicles also require the electric charging infrastructure. The town actually received a grant earlier this year to, for a fleet electrification study, so it's not as simple as us just saying, hey, there's an electric vehicle, buy it. We have to make sure we have the infrastructure in place, and we're going about it strategically, and remembering that most of our school buildings are older, and that's a challenge. For instance, the, we're doing the parking lots over at the Willet in the Oldham. We're building in the infrastructure when we do those parking lots to make sure that we can have charging stations and charging availability. So that will come in time, but we've gotten the grant funding to do a fleet electrification study to make sure we're strategically going about it and not buying vehicles before we have the infrastructure or infrastructure before we have the vehicles. I would say 10 years from now, a majority of our vehicles will be all-electric for all the town's fleet. It's just we've got to get there strategically in a reasonably cost-effective way, but that's in the process.
Yes.
In the past, we thought, as town meeting members, that the school department was to get 55% of the money that was brought in, and the town, the rest of the town was to live on the remaining 45. And if that's still true, it's not still true, because I'm wondering if we approve this, does that keep the school committee and the school department within the 55%? Or if it, or could that be explained so that we know at this point how much money the school department is taking percentage-wise out of all of the money that we generate, leaving the rest for the other departments in the town, please?
I think Mr. Slater is going to take that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. First of all, the 55-45 split between the schools and general government went away when we approved the override about four or five years ago. Additionally, what we're talking about are items that are extra to the budget, they're not general items that would be included in a school budget. And the last item is, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, I'd have to look at it, but in the presentation that I'm going to make later, at the beginning of the annual town meeting, one of the charts that you'll see is how much money is used by the schools in relation to general government facilities and shared costs. And I think you will see that the school department is the largest of those four items.
Follow-up, Madam Moderator?
Sure.
So it sounds like that with the passing of the override or overrides, that we now give, is it more, and this is what you're going to show us, Mr. Slater, we give more than 55% of all of the money that comes in to the school department?
No, Madam Moderator, that is not correct. It was, it was complicated formula that was used before, you know, the 55-45. It sounds simple, it really was quite complicated, and once the override was passed, we set certain amounts that, at the time, the school department, general government would receive. And it was determined with the override pledge that the school department and the general government budgets would increase only by three and a half percent a year, with the understanding that if there were any mandated programs, that was outside the three and a half percent. So I can tell you that as, as a whole, the school budget, I believe, thank you, Sarah, the school budget takes 38% of the total revenue from the community. The shared cost is 29%. General government is 27%, and the facilities are 6%.
So is the thinking, Madam Moderator, if I can, as a follow-up? So when we get these requests that we do in the spring and the fall, they're not considered part of the school department budget, or they are? Please.
It, I mean, it, it all depends a lot of times on what the specific request is. Typically, a request during the special town meeting is for a particular item that is considered outside the overall budget process. What you see in the annual town meeting, generally, are items that are part of their overall, you know, budget, you know, for that particular year. But it's the same thing, you know, with, with the town, you know, whether, you know, as I said, during, during the special town meeting, those are considered as generally outside the base budget.
Yeah, I think, I think the simple answer to your question is, these are capital items, they're one-time expenses, as opposed to the operating budget, which is what they utilize year after year after year. So that's the distinction.
Madam Moderator, thank you so much for explaining that. I think it, if we're thinking about how much money the school department is the recipient of, from the town money, it helps if we see the whole of it, because otherwise, when we see parts like this, it's, it's difficult to wrap my brain around how much money different departments are receiving from the, from us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pachakowski.
Mike Ryan, thanks, Mike. Bernie Pachakowski, District Nine, on the Capital Outlay Committee. Just, when we look at capital projects, we don't look at departments, we look at needs. And on this particular article, you know, the schools come, they, they need to come in, in the spring because of the, the timing on the IT stuff. So on the IT that they need, they got to read, you know, upgrade the high school computer labs. I mean, there's, we got to, the one thing that I believe in is with our kids, you know, computers is, this is the world for these kids, and we got to have the best, I consider we, we should have nothing but the best for these kids to learn, because they're going to be competing in the world against, you know, kids that, that have had this stuff. So I think the IT stuff is absolutely important. As far as the vans, that, that's school transportation. They're, they literally are on duct tape and zip, zip ties, keeping those vehicles available and running, and they have no spares. It's, everybody knows the crunch on vehicles, trying to get them, and thank Amazon for buying all the frames for all these vans. So we're probably, at best, we're looking at two years before we see these things. So the philosophy here is, let's appropriate the money now, let's get in line, let's got on, get our name in line, so when they do become available, we're already in, in the queue, and we're not wait, you know, putting it off. So I think these two things are, are really based on, on need, so I hope you support them. Thank you.
Yep. Jane Taylor, District Five, move the question, second. All right, Ms. Taylor, seconds. All right, the question has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. All right, that takes us to Article nine, majority vote, that the sum of $117,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes of school IT. Further, the sum of 212, $212,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for purpose of school special education vehicles. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries, unanimous, Slade. Article 10, Mr. Slater.
Motion by the FinCom, move that the sum of $60,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of an elementary school study.
And that's being seconded by Mrs. Bodenhoffer?
That's correct.
On the motion, Mr. Slater.
Again, I think the yellow sheet explains it. Any further clarification, I would defer it to the school department.
Any questions on the motion? Again, this is a one-time expense. All right, seeing none, let's put it to a vote. This is a majority vote, that the sum of $60,000 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purposes of an elementary school study. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 11, Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Motion by the FinCom, move that the transfer from the appropriation voted by the 2022 annual town meeting under Article Four, Motion Six, Debt Service, the sum of $144,135 to fund 008 sewer debt service.
And seconded by Mrs. Bodenhoffer again.
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Slater, anything on the motion?
This is really just a housekeeping item. It's no appropriation of new funds, it's just moving money from one account to another.
Yeah, I believe it's, it is a technical correction to ensure proper alignment of payments from the DPW Water and Sewer. Any questions? Seeing none, this is a majority vote as well, to transfer the appropriation voted by the 2002 annual town meeting under Article Four, Motion Six, Debt Service, the sum of $144,135 to fund 0008 sewer debt service. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Article 12, Mr. Lane in the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town amend the general bylaws by, A, assigning a chapter, article number to each of the general bylaws, B, renumbering each section of each bylaw accordingly, C, inserting chapter, article, section titles, D, editing grammar and spelling, and E, updating internal references to reflect the new numbering system, which changes are set forth in a document on file with the town clerk.
And Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding. Mr. Lane, anything on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. On the motion, the general manager is prepared to speak to this article.
Mr. Mizuka, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is just updating our general bylaws to make sure that there is correct spelling, grammar, section titles, and that the Roman numerals are correct. It makes no changes to our actual bylaw, we're just moving to a digital system where general code will maintain all of our systems digitally. Unfortunately, our general bylaws are a little messy, some of them are quite old, but this just makes it so that they can be put in a digital format and tracked and searched digitally. It doesn't actually change any of the wording or what any of our general bylaws do. The zoning bylaws are already updated in this format. At some point, there will likely be a general bylaw review, but that is not this, this is just making the technical corrections. Usually, if a bylaw has a typo here or there, it's not a big deal, but we went through the whole thing. There's several typos, and we just use wrong Roman numerals over the years.
So again, this is really step needed, no change in the actual bylaws, just a step to order to move to a digital format. Anything on the motion? And again, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article 12 passes. Article 13, Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Motion by the FinCom, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept a grant under the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund, Fund Act, Public Law 88-578, 78 statute 7897, Roman numeral four, and to enter, enter any contracts necessary for park development improvements at the St. Street Lot, also known as the Bernie Cooper Waterfront Park, located on the land shown on the Norwood assessment maps, is
And Mr. Lane, I think you're seconding that. Okay. Mr. Slater, anything on the motion?
Well, again, this is just something that the grant authority is requiring, that is a town board, a town, that the appropriate town authority will, will approve the, the grant. There are certain restrictions on the grant, which really are not that much more than what we already have on the property. But this is really a good thing, because in the end, you know, we will receive a grant of $717,000 and some change, and the amount, and that'll certainly reduce the amount of money which we put in previously, using both free cash as well as funds from the Community Preservation Act.
And as I understand it, we've informally, we've been informed that we are getting this grant, so this is good news, so we're really accepting the grant. Anything on the motion? And this is a simple majority as well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries. Article 14 by the FinCom, Mr. Slater.
Oops. No. Hope not. Thank you. Never mind. Thank you. With that, motion by the FinCom, move that the sum of $18,041.42 be transferred from free cash and appropriated for the purpose of paying unpaid bills for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2022.
And Mrs. Bodenhoffer, you're seconding?
Yes.
I believe we have a listing of the unpaid bills. There we go, magically appearing. This takes a nine-tenths vote to approve it. I know, Mrs. Homeloid, I don't, I don't make these statutes up, thank the Commonwealth. Any questions? I don't see any, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Can I have a motion to, Mr. Plasko, to dissolve the town, the special town meeting and...
Madam Moderator.
Well, actually, Mr. Plasko beat you. I believe, Mr. Plasko, you have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and reopen the annual town meeting. And Mr. Connolly, we'll let you second that one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, that moves us to Article One of the annual town meeting. The warrant can be found in Section Two of your budget book. Article One, Mr. Lane, a motion by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Moves that the annual report of the town officials of the town of Norwood be received and accepted as printed.
Mr. Donnelly, you're seconding. Mr. Lane, anything on this?
Just on the motion, the annual reports are available in the lobby and also online. You should get one.
Anything on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries by a simple majority, which is what's required. Article Two by the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Move that the town hereby allows the treasurer, from time to time, and such terms and conditions as the treasurer or collector may deem appropriate, to enter into compensating balance agreements with banks in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53F, with the approval of the Board... Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen.
And Mr. Donnelly is seconding. Thank you. Anything on the motion, Mr. Lane?
Uh, Madam Moderator, uh, just that this, um, is a recurring article that we have each year. It just allows the treasurer to do their job.
All right, housekeeping. Takes a simple majority. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Article three, Mr. Slater and the FinCom.
Thank you, uh, Madam Moderator. Uh, motion by the FinCom, move that the town hereby authorize the following revolving fund spending limits for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, for the purposes of funding programs administered by Council of Aging, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, Norwood Public Library, seventy-five thousand dollars, Health Department Tobacco Enforcement and Education, twenty-five thousand dollars.
And Mrs. Bodenhofer is seconding?
Yes.
Mr. Slater on the motion?
Uh, these are, this is just a motion which we, uh, require to approve every year, giving these entities the rights to, uh, collect money, uh, with the revolving fund to use, uh, for their, uh, approved expenses.
Yeah, so we're conforming with Mass. General Law on this.
Yes.
Any questions? Seeing none. This takes a simple majority. All those in favor of Article three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. I do not believe that we could get through Article four in the time that we have available, so I would entertain a motion, Mr. Connolly, to... All right, at six-thirty, do I have a second? Mrs. Quinn, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We'll see you at six-thirty on Thursday. Thank you very much.